Welcome to the November 6, 2023 Planning Commission Committee, the whole special meeting. First of all, I'd like to thank community and staff for their work, interest and feedback on these two cases that we're going to hear today. There are actually three items listed for the agenda. The first one is only for reference and outlines the history of the case progress. Please note that we've had three meetings with public comment. Two other items have appeared on the previous Planning Commission and Committee of the Whole agendas, and we will hear a staff update presentation for each item. Also, please note that we have two special committee whole meetings scheduled, today's meeting and one on November 29th here in council chambers. Council has provided an extension for the full Planning Commission to deliver the recommendations for these two cases by December 12th, 2023. So this is our directive and our intent is to review and discuss the two main cases in an efficient manner. I ask that all members of the community and commission provide focused comments and questions during this meeting. There will not be an open public comment at this time. We will allow for comments from requesters and the public on the individual requests later. Before we begin, I would like to ask each commission member to reflect on the following questions for the two cases. First one, does the bus rapid transit belong on New Bern Avenue? If yes, the second question would be, should the TOD be supported around this corridor? If yes, should we approve the TOD as written? Or if yes, should we approve it with amendments? And also consider if yes, how is this applied to individual parcel requests? So those are things I just asked the commission to review and think about as we go through these cases. I'll just touch on the first item. The, oh, I'm sorry. Before we proceed, I would, without objection, like to recuse Commissioner Fox from the remaining items for discussion.
Thank you. As I've mentioned before, my firm was contracted with the city to complete this work, and although there is no financial gain to me now, I request again out of an abundance of caution to be recused. Thank you.
I'm going to touch lightly on the item one, the process update. I would like to say that the text change committee recommended adoption of a text change for this TOD and other TODs, and the city council approved that text change on October 3rd with an effective date of November 2nd. So without objection, we'll move on. Item number two, this is rezoning case Z9222, New Bern Station Area Planning. This was a city initiated request to add the Transit Overlay District and/or change underlying zoning districts to 744 parcels along the New Bern Avenue Bus Rapid Transit Corridor. So I'd like to ask for Irem Mabel to provide update, brief update for each of the three sections, starting with a re-review of the East section, pause for public comment for those individual cases we have not received comment on, and then move to the Middle Section and then with the West Section.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Rins, Irem Mabel Planning and Development. So as Mr. Rins just outlined, just a reminder of the next steps, there is another committee of the whole meeting in the 29th with the final recommendation from you no later than 12th. We're also have already scheduled the public hearing, or council has already scheduled the public hearing, and staff scheduling some what are our Ask a Planner sessions, which we do for large projects and other times we want to have extra engagement. So those are booked for the 11th and the 18th already in the evening time. So there'll be more information about that on the project website as we get closer. It has been a while, I think, since we first introduced the rezoning half of these two items. We spent quite a bit of time going over the comprehensive plan amendment throughout the course of the life of these cases and responding to questions and comments from commission. So I do want to sort of reset just basically the rezoning request overall before we get back into as Mr. Rins mentioned, the individual request from property owners. So the comprehensive plan amendment has quite a big table of implementation steps and funding, funding suggestions for council, which we've talked about over the past couple of meetings. And also, the origins of the rezoning request was one of those steps. So this was the map prepared by the project team, so just to give us the scope of where we were thinking at the time with all of the finalization of the engagement and all the other work that the consultant helped us do. Staff then took that map and sort of fine tuned it with this rubric. So this is a summary of what's in a little bit more detail in the staff report. So we try to think of, think ahead of time for some more objective issues that we want to look at before we do a project like this, trying to keep us as close to objective as we can as a planner. So these were the criteria that we took from this map to then sort of verify the actual like parcel line boundary. So prioritizing parcels on New Bern and Eton Street, New Bern Avenue, Eton Street, mixed use zoning districts close to the corridor, future land use map designations of a certain density or higher, contiguity of the Transit Overlay District, large institutions, so Wake Med and St. Augustine's were fairly involved in the planning process. Other UDO or other city requirements that might conflict with the TOD, and then the last two are not criteria, but a sort of overall approach. So the Eastern and Middle Stations by and large were not increased in terms of maximum building height by as much. So mostly, that is uniformly three stories today, mostly proposed to be five, but east of Wake Madden outside the Belt Line are where the higher heights were proposed. So that's just a summary. And I do have some overview slides just to sort of reset everybody. So for the most, this does not have, all the colors on this map by and large are the same. So we're not proposing to change uses anywhere. The one exception here is that these are current, these areas are currently are something else, RX, I think. That's supposed to be RX. But this is where the bulk of the height is. You can see a lot of sevens. Particularly, there's a lot of big shopping malls and out parcels that the study suggested could absorb a lot of additional density here. Some of the parcels that are bordering or transitioning to more neighborhoods, so like these ones are a little bit shorter at CX3. The RX4 is down here, similar. So a lot of sevens and then some, some fives and lower. But the quarter mile out here, or the block, so to speak, fronting New Berns are quite large. So these lots are very big. So we, the city does not split zone parcels if we can help it. So a lot of these shopping centers and if you're, you know, considering the block as a whole, the COD certainly has a bigger out, bigger reach out here than the closer you get to downtown. So that's sort of the summary of that thinking. Continuing to move westward. So this is Wake Med. You'll see they, they are not included in the rezoning. They were pretty heavily involved. One of the, there was a Wake Med representative on our advisory team. I think ultimately their decision was if they wanted to do something pretty significant that would require different zoning, then they would rezone themselves through some master planning process. So opted to go that route in the future, should that ever happen for their own reasons. But, so between the Belt Line and Wake Med, there is this cluster of, again, not changing the CX portion, but there are some 12 stories there. There is sort of a gap you can see in this area that was a recent rezoning that was approved for 12 stories. So staff sort of treated that area similarly, given past analysis of the comp plan and action by council, why that height there is sort of matching sort of very recent precedent. That's a 2021 or two case, I want to say. And then there is this sort of larger multifamily area under common ownership that was proposed to go to five, which is pretty consistent with all the other residential zoning on the corridor. There is a gap. The final design of the BRT corridor itself, there is a portion where the stations are farther than half mile apart. So if there are two stations are half mile apart, that means the quarter mile shed touches. So you're always a quarter mile from somewhere. That is not true in this portion of the Longview neighborhood. So we did not extend the TOD overlay in that area because it was farther from the station than we were, our sort of rubric. So the TOD does stop Pear Tree, and there is a bit of a gap. But the properties in the Longview and the King Charles and COD do all receive the RX3 district. So we worked also pretty closely with a couple of members from that neighborhood who are also on our advisory group. This green plus frontage was added to the code in large part because of that engagement. So that is enhanced planting standards that they were very interested in. And you cannot put a frontage on a residential district. So if you want the frontage, you need to be RX or something. So that is sort of, I don't want to say a compromise, but like a necessity to map that, to give, to achieve that goal of theirs for having those planting standards was that zoning change. And the TOD itself is, you know, fairly close to New Bern Avenue, one to three parcels, depending on the configuration of the widths and depths there. The Pool Road area, so from Pool Road to Lord Anson is kind of the farthest assembly of total blocks that are not fronting on the corridor itself. But again, once we're past Wake Med, it's all five. There is a little bit, this block is a little bit further in between and recommended to stay at three. And then finally, the Western Stations, so continuing up Pool Road and the sort of New Bern Avenue Triangle is the farthest we get. And then really not, no more base district changes. I think some of these are, in that shape I just drew, are 10. And the rest, all of the NX and the OX, so the pink and the blue, the colors are remaining the same, but uniformly the height increased from three to five. So this is the DMV site and the Martin Street Baptist Church. Martin Street Baptist Church, someone like Wake Med did request to be included, which is why the TOD sort of extends farther than what the city was proposing. They've been great partners with us, and we've had a lot of meetings there. And so they did want to be in the rezoning. And similarly, St. Augustine's owns most of this stretch of Oakwood. So there isn't a height increase proposal there, but they were interested in the TOD. I think they are planning of their own master plan for the campus itself, but we're unsure if that would include the properties on the South Side or not. And then this one, which is cut off, is a DHIC property. So already in affordable housing development and was interested in potentially having the height to build their product there. There is one area, so the TOD stops at the Oakwood Historic Overlay District. We are not proposing to map it in the Historic Overlay District, but there is some zoning changes there, and I have some slides about that later. But that was the sort of re-summarary of where we're starting from in terms of the city proposal, as it was whenever we did the application in '22. So I do have, before the requests, I think there were some other So these are a bit more, they cover more than just one individual property, that sort of cover ideas, topic areas. So the first one was single unit living. We covered that already through the the text change that's approved. So essentially, that was to permit detached and attached living. So that has been done. The other three I do have slides for for you to think about. So the first is historic properties. There are two types of historic properties that have, that come with requirements from the city of Raleigh. The the first are historic landmarks. Those are individual structures designated individually. So that's not a zoning, that's just a designation that council can grant for a building itself. And the second type is a Historic Overlay District. So that is zoning. It does go through the zoning process like every other rezoning or overlay, including this one or any other overlay. So any change to the Historic Overlay District goes through the neighborhood meeting requirements, the notice, planning commission, city council, et cetera. Both of those properties must abide by the Certificate of Appropriateness process. That is a quasi judicial process run by the Historic Development Commission. So that is when people present evidence as testimony that you are sworn in like a court. And as for external alterations to the buildings, I'm going to summarize this very briefly, must be approved by that commission. So it's sort of overrides, so to speak, a lot of the other requirements in the U D O in favor of that process. There is one distinction between, so for the most part, those, the, if you're a landmark or in a zoning, a Historic Overlay zoning, basically, you're treated the same. The one nuance is if your building is demolished and you are a historic landmark, then you don't have to go through the C O A process anymore because that is a designation for the building, so you need a building there. If your building is demolished in the Historic Overlay District, the zoning is still in place because zoning doesn't change, right? Zoning, to change the zoning, you got to go through what we're doing right now. So a bit of a nuance that raised some concern from the historic preservation community, that there was a bit of a weaker protection for landmarks than overlays. So just to keep that in mind, there are three historic landmarks in the corridor. There are the Henry Porter House, St. Monica School, which is, shares a lot with the Tarboro Community Center, and the William Curtis House. Those are the three. So this is sort of first, first slide like this, where staff is proposing alternatives. Alternative A on all these slides is basically keep the rezoning request as it's been presented. And then B and sometimes C is do something else. So in this case, A is to zone them T O D, you know, N X5 or O X5 T O D or whatever, is the recommendation for that property. And B is just to remove them. So it was never the intent of staff to encourage or imply that we, you know, demolition of these properties would be in anyone's interest. So we recommend support removing them entirely from the rezoning request. So the Henry Porter House would remain, O X3 in the N C O D, St. Monica School, and in fact, the entire Tarboro Community Center would remain R10, and then the William Curtis House, N X3, none of which were the T O D. So that's what staff is recommending. I don't know if you want me to go through all of them, or if you want to.
Can you repeat that? You're recommending.
Just don't rezone them, is the short answer. So the original proposal included them, treated them like all the other properties they were near, essentially. We did not single out the historic landmarks to be treated differently or to be zoned, considered differently than their neighbors. So in this case, we are recommend, so it was brought to our attention that this this distinction of the certificate of appropriations process might cause some outcomes that no one was anticipating or in favor of relatively small sites. You know, we certainly were not trying to imply that these were important redevelopment sites in particular. So staff, you know, supports just not rezoning them altogether, leaving them with whatever their current zoning is now. So it is up to, I don't, if Commissioner reigns, if you want to pause for each of these, or you want me to run through.
Let's let's run through all of.
Okay.
The three outstanding items, and then we can go back to the table and discuss.
The second type of historic property is the overlay district. So that's this diamond pattern, shows the Oakwood H O D. The properties that are included in Z9222 are outlined here in yellow. So you can see there's, this is gringo agogo, I think, the N X3 there on the corner, if that helps you orient. And then there is some mostly office zoned properties in the overlay district. So this is the same shot, the, the proposal is to, the staff proposal is to rezone them to downtown mixed use, but not in the transit overlay districts. Again, we're not proposing to map that anywhere in the city have them overlap, and not to remove the H O D. So that certificate of appropriateness process I talked about would remain. Really, the entirety of this intent was to permit more reuse of these buildings. So again, there, the C O A process controls what the buildings look like. So if anything you do to change your structure, that's visible, basically, from the outside has to go through that. But it, the C O A does not control at all what happens inside the building. That is still controlled by zoning. So the intent of this was to allow owners of these properties more options for use of their building while keeping still the historic controls in place. So for example, as I said, most of these are office. So office zoning does not permit indoor recreation, for example. So you could not rent your building for private use, really. Most of that falls under indoor recreation. Personal service, retail, so you cannot turn your house really into anything but a house, and office. There are quite a number of attorneys or I think some medical uses are permitted in O X too, but really pretty limiting in terms of what you can, what you can use it for. So N X there is in the middle, again, kind of like climbing the ladder of the zoning districts. So would permit more reuse options for these buildings, and then DX is the most. So would permit basically everything. We can come back to this if you have specific questions about individual uses. So again, the letter A here is Z9222, as we've been presenting it, so to rezone to DX3. And really, the only option here, other than that, is to just leave them with their office or neighborhood mixed use. There's no T O D proposed here, there's no height proposed here. It's really just the base change. The next, so that was historic properties. The next topic, which we've all heard a lot about, is building height. So as I went through before, this slide uniformly is proposed to be five stories, all that dark blue, but for the sort of lighter yellow or green color is proposed to stay at three. So that's the north side of of New Bern, between the Community Center and East Street. There are a couple of small lots over on this, the Tarboro Pettigrew Block, and then this, this block, which is the farthest on the slide from any station area. So those are the three stories. Otherwise, the proposal is five. So we did go back and take another look at this, given all the, all the discussion we've heard about, about building height. And similar to, you know, the sort of criteria I listed before, before sitting down to do this, thought of like what, what would be some, as objective as we could, some criteria to think about for alternative high proposals. So looking number one at the what is called edge properties. So there are some properties that are particularly between the New Bern Eden split, you know, propose to have the the T O D on either side of them. So we're in the the middle, so to speak, of the, of the overlay district. The same is true of the the New Bern Triangle. But other properties that are at the the boundary line of the T O D were considered for lower height. Similarly, smaller lots, so for this criteria, using the minimum lot size for an apartment building. Apartment buildings today are allowed on this entire slide, to be clear. Everything here is R10 or higher. But you do need at least 7500 square feet of lot area to build an apartment building. So looking at that as a criteria for some of these smaller lots, where you would have to assemble more than one. And, you know, taller than three story townhouses are are pretty unusual. You certainly can do them, but typically, when you're going for taller height, you're looking for either a mixed use building or an apartment building. So that was another rule of thumb that we used. And then large sites, which a little bit arbitrary, I sort of picked half an acre. Certainly not large compared to the the lots outside the belt line, but, but given the context of this, you know, looking at at ones that could accommodate a larger redevelopment scenario. So half an acre isn't a magic number. It just kind of worked out nicely for this. That's a slide about apartment buildings. So this is a, an alternative. So again, the sort of lighter color, three story, there's some more, more instances of that. So some of these more edge, edge, edge lots that are smaller now proposed, some more sort of towards the neighborhood, proposed to remain at three. And then the larger sites to remain at five. This is like now city owned, sort of like treated that as one big site. And then everywhere else was, was proposed to be four rather than three. So to be clear, that would allow four story development by right, taller than that, could be possible if you include affordable housing as part of that. So that was our rationale. There are, to be fair, an infinite number of ways you could do this. But again, sort of thinking through from the, the feedback we heard, planning principles, also the, the U D O, the code, like what's possible, sort of a middle, middle approach that we're proposing here. So again, alternative A is to leave it as is, which is this first slide, mostly five, some three. B is to do this four story, sort of middle alternative. And then C in this case is don't zone it at all, so leave it all at three. So we're recommending this, this as the new height approach for this part of the corridor. And then the last topic area were N C O Ds. Every N C O D is different, so I did think of them separately. The King Charles and the New Bern Eden are the two that overlap with this particular B R T corridor. Just for some scope, there are potentially five that would overlap with the B R T in general. So this purple area is where the city has been focusing, applying the transit overlay district. So we've already done so for, for properties on western and southern. And then the last remaining corridor is the northern corridor, which does have some potential to potentially overlap with, with two N C O Ds, although the walkability to stations there makes that uncertain at best. It's pretty hard to get from some of those places to a station, so. In any event, I did, like I said, the alternatives, this is really just trying to state very clearly what could and couldn't happen with or without the T O D. So like I said, every N C D is unique. This is the, the standards for King Charles, has a two story building height, three quarters of an acre lot size. So what that prevents really is what we call fee simple townhouses or a row of townhouses that are all in their own lot, you know, 16 or 20 feet wide. But you could build larger buildings, you know, that is a pretty big, three quarters of an acre can accommodate a lot of stuff. And then lot width minimum of 144 feet and front setback 76 feet. So these are not really to scale. These cartoons on the right, they are kind of close, but sort of in the style of the U D O, showing about what a three quarter of an acre lot could be. So detached or attached, sort of building type on the top, and a, and a sort of modest two story multifamily on the bottom. The green plus frontage, which is in the mix here in in King Charles, does a couple of things. It is an urban frontage, so it inherits or has inherited all the other things that all the other urban frontages in the code have, so green, urban limited, parking limited, shop front, et cetera. So they do only allow these three building types, townhouse, apartment, mixed use. They have a bill two rather than a setback. The, the big thing that green plus is doing is, is a enhanced planting requirement. So that would require more vegetation in the front yard, essentially. And then the standard sort of parking language, when you hear about like parking setbacks and stuff, and, and every other urban frontage that you've ever had to consider. So that does make it kind of confusing because there are a lot of permutations in this particular neighborhood. But essentially, what the, what the T O D is doing is, so without the T O D, that, that bottom row there, you know, two story development on three quarters of an acre, with the T O D, with or without the green plus, you could build a three story by right, potentially up to five, if there were affordable housing included. And then they, the lots, the lot size does get much smaller. So potentially could fit a lot more units or subdivide some of these larger lots that exist today. The other N C O D is the New Bern N C O D. And in particular, for this one, I did limit it to the north side of New Bern. So the N C D does extend all the way to the south, but for those, that area already zoned mixed use, O X for the most part, sort of treated that under the height and other slides. So this is really about the residentially zoned part of this N C O D. So this one limits building height to 35 feet and has a minimum lot size of 4,000. So essentially, those fee simple townhouses would be hard to do, not impossible. Again, if you think of a townhouse as like 16 to 20 feet wide and however many feet back, 50 or 80 or something, probably not as likely. But again, all of these lots can have apartment buildings on them already, and you could certainly do that with a 4,000 square foot minimum because the U D O requires more than that already. So really, what this N C D is doing is, is capping the height to two stories. There isn't really any other conflict with either the Unified Development Ordinance as is or the Transit Oriented Development District. The T O D would essentially allow taller buildings. So for the, the properties zoned RX3, we're not proposing a height increase here, so you would get the three stories by right and then the bonus of the T O D. And then there are a couple R10, which the way the T O D treats R10 is basically like RX4. So there's no hype on us there. So this one's certainly much easier to wrap your head around. It's really height limit or not. The King Charles has more moving pieces because of the different components. And that is the end of that. The rest of my slides are the individual requests.
Thank you, Mr. Michael.
Happy to go back. I know that's a lot. And it, we're now in the part of where it's very nuanced, like code outcomes, so.
Thanks for reviewing that information. It is a lot of information. At this point, I'd like to pause and ask if there's any comments from the members of the community to discuss on those main items, R H Ls, H O Ds, allowable heights, and N C O Ds. For each of those four things, I'd, I'd give five minutes to each before and against each of those four topics, starting with Raleigh Historic Landmarks. So is there anybody from the member of the public who would like to speak for and or against?
Two minutes of prepared comments on all of Z92 parts.
No, we're not going, I'm sorry, we're not going to allow general comments on this. We'd like to focus in on these specific topics here, and, and we'll get to individual cases later on.
Okay. All right. Russ Stevenson, former Raleigh Planning Commissioner, good to be back with you again. One of the most striking things that I've heard in the comments. One of the most striking things that I've heard in the comments today from staff is all the reasons why these upzonings are going to promote economic development and density, and obviously there's some smart growth goals involved there. But there are also equity goals here that the city has. And back in 2016, when I was on council, this is what then Planning Director Ken Bowers said at a National Smart Growth Forum about revitalization without displacement. He said, "The Wake Transit Plan brings a frequent, proposes to bring frequent bus transit to some of Raleigh's lowest wealth communities. Now's the time to ensure that these investments benefit rather than displace households and families." Now, what I've heard today, again, from staff, for all the reasons why this is going to promote economic development, I haven't heard anything that said this is how these are going to serve the lowest wealth communities that are here now, or how we're going to protect them, those families, from displacement. So I'm just very concerned that everything here is framed around growth and development, and all the promises that we made to the community back in 2016 seem to be missing. And that applies to all of these items you're discussing here. Thank you.
Hi there. If you can say your name and address, please.
My name is Charles Walker, 275 North P. Ridge Road, Pittsboro, North Carolina. I'll continue the former old planning commission run with Russ. I served on the planning commission for eight years. The simple thing that I'm asking about here is very specific. The Brewer family owns 307, 311, and 325 Edington Street. 307 and 311 are included in the TOD. 325 is not. We're asking for it to be included because if it does that, then it's all under one ownership. And then the Future Land Use Plan contemplated these lots of being in the Central Business District, and that's all I wanted to, that was my, the total of my comments.
Okay, thank you. I was going to say, well, I'd like to revisit that when we get to the individual cases and.
Okay, I'm sorry. It was getting kind of, it was getting kind of cloudy here where we were supposed to speak, so I just want to make sure.
To be fair to Chuck, those are historic in the Historic Overlay District. So I think it's, to correct me if I'm wrong, Chuck, but it's all these three plus this fourth one?
It's not the corner lot.
Not the corner lot.
It's a parking lot, a building that has been converted to office use, and a rental property of the three lots.
Hi, everyone. Morgan Commu. I'm at 110 North State Street, and I just wanted to say that I appreciate the changes that have been made around the St. Monica Teen Center. So that was something that we raised in our neighborhood, that we didn't want it to be rezoned, so really appreciate the committee taking a closer look and sort of leaving it as-is right now. There's going to be a whole development process, and I know my neighbors and I are really excited to see what Tarboro Community Center can become. So just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate the revisiting. And then also the three-story maximum in the Idlewild neighborhood, makes a lot of sense. I live there right now. It would look totally bizarre if it was further or taller than three stories. So again, just a nod to the work and the thoughtfulness around continuing to listen to people, and I really appreciate the modifications that have been made in my neighborhood. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi. I don't want to miss the chance to speak as another former planning commissioner, so here I am, Bob Geary. The chair, I think, said his questions today were, "Do we support the BRT?" And my answer would be yes, I do. And "Do I support the TOD in the BRT corridor?" Wouldn't that your next? And yes, I do. And if I do that, if I do, then do I support Z92 in its entirety? No, I don't. Do I support it in part? No, I don't. I think the appropriate way to develop in this corridor is to have the TOD applied, but upzoning of properties should be taken case by case, so that applicants can come in, not the city, but the owners, and offer conditions to their applications. And the conditions should include affordable housing units. It should also include whatever other elements are needed to make the particular site fit well with the station. That may include keeping some trees, may include a plaza, I don't know what it would include, but every single site will be different. And to do this mass upzoning and to allow owners not to conform their properties and their higher zoning densities to any plan, it's the antithesis of planning. I don't know why we have a planning commission if this is the way we're going to do planning. Development in the city should be organic. It should be case by case. People should come in and say, "Here's a site," as St. Monica's did, "they want out. I'm not sure they want five-story buildings around them, but they don't want to be five stories yet, but maybe someday they will. And let's see what they propose." Wake Med says, "If we want to develop, we'll come in with a proposal of our own, but don't rezone us, don't let the city rezone us. We'll apply for what we want." This is not the way to do this. So yes to your first question, yes to your second question, no and no.
Before you start, I'd like to remind, for the public comment in this section, I'd like to maintain on topic for RHLs, HODs, NCODs, and allowable height, if you have comments for and against those topics that staff just presented.
Yes. Michael Sutton, 542 East Edington Street. I have comments on all of those, but I thought we were specifically talking about these properties in the HOD. I don't think that the Hungry Neck neighborhood would have any issues with the ones that are further down, but these ones in the middle here that are bordering and part of the Hungry Neck neighborhood, we do have issues with them going from their current zoning to DX. I would like to point out that DX is a higher use. It is what Glenwood South is, and all those issues that go with bars and entertainment do not need to be adjacent to a neighborhood and bring those issues into a neighborhood. And I would also like to point out, as I've stated several times before, that this includes the properties that are currently addiction recovery houses. Doesn't make sense to build, allow to build a bar next door to an addiction recovery As, it's just a bad idea. Is this also time to talk about NCODs, or is that separate?
Yeah, at this time, we can discuss NCODs, for and against comments.
Again, I believe that some of these changes are placating and not exactly what any of us has asked for. Recently, I found my first communication about the TOD. It's a letter I received in 2019. It's all about commercial property. And I would just like to say that if you had separated these 700-and-some properties, the commercial part, the eastern part of this corridor, this is perfect. We wouldn't have asked for any changes to single living or anything. You all had said in lots of other stuff along the way that this was about commercial properties, that this shouldn't be applied to NCODs. You had it right the first time, and you've changed the rules along the way. And even since we've put in these petitions and everything, there's still text changes and rules that have changed at least three times. Nobody's informed the neighborhoods. We don't know. I was here the last meeting, you talked about, you actually tried to explain a text change about three or four times, and I still came away confused. You know, this is, I would suggest that you break this up, pass the part that needs to be passed, and revisit these nuanced parts that need a lot more thought put into it.
Thank you. Any other comments on the topics, RHL, NCODs, allowable heights? If not, I will bring it back to the table for discussion. Any commissioners have any comments or questions? If so, please be recognized.
I'll kick us off with Raleigh Historic Landmarks. I would agree with the staff recommendation to remove the Raleigh Historic Landmarks or RHLs from the rezoning request.
Mr. Chair, how would you like to go about this procedure? Are you going to make votes on the individual items? Or are we going to discuss this and take it in whole?
Yes, I think that'd be clearest to, so let's start with RHLs and make a recommendation on that, and then move on to HODs, allowable heights, and NCODs.
If Commissioner Miller's comment stands as a recommend, as a motion, then I would second that. I would like to second the removal of historic, Raleigh Historic Landmarks from the rezoning and the TOD.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any?
By removing them, does that remove them from the TOD overlay as well?
Yes, ma'am.
And why is that important, again?
So effectively, the TOD doesn't really do anything if, as long as they are historic landmarks. So the Transit Overlay District prohibits uses, certainly, but all of the form, so the two-story height minimum, the height bonus, even probably like drive-throughs. Anything form-related doesn't apply anyhow because the certificate of appropriations process basically trumps all of that stuff. The COA process trumps a lot of the UDO. There's a whole separate track for that, where you, you know, hire an architect and present what you want to do to the committee. So the TOD isn't really doing anything, so it's, you know, loss. It being there or not doesn't really contribute or hinder the goal of the plan, and the goal of this rezoning.
So I was more just trying to open up the discussion. I personally agree with the staff recommendation to remove these items. If there's no discussion at the table, I'm happy to make a motion to that effect, but if there's discussion, by all means.
I just, I'm going to be a little bit of a broken record today, so I guess I'll just start my comment and just repeat it every time we vote, but I'm not opposed to staff's recommendation to pull these out, but I'm opposed to the rezoning overall. So I'm just gonna be the dissenter, the great dissenter today, and just vote no on all the pieces that we're voting on because I don't support it in its entirety. I don't, I am not comfortable with this process. It doesn't feel right. It feels like, I feel like we're sitting here doing things at the table that affect people, and it needs to go back out to the people and come back out to us as a completely revised rezoning request. So even though there are little elements of it that I'm okay with, like this, I don't support the process of how we're doing this bit by bit. I don't support the fact that there are people who can be here to ask for their request and say, "Take me out, put me in. No, we're going to do our own master plan." And there are other people who are going to be greatly affected by this who can't do that same thing. So that's going to be my general comment for this entire rezoning.
I just have some clarifying questions, and is probably, just is repeating everything all the time. What was your notification process? What was the city's notification process? Were there committee, were there community meetings? What did they see? And so then essentially, are these modifications different from what they saw?
You're talking about the notifications for these alternatives or for the whole project?
Like the various, like, so did you go in with one proposal, have various community meetings? People were in attendance, people participated? And then subsequently, you've had these, and so now are we looking at it as a quasi-modified that maybe the community didn't have a global meeting?
Yeah. So this started again from a planning process. So we had a lot of meetings over the course of, over a year, and for the Equitable Development on Transit project for over a year before that. So, you know, if you're talking about BRT in this corridor and potential rezoning in this corridor, there's been a lot of meetings over, since 2018. I don't remember, Mr. Sutton said he got his first letter. I just want to sort of credit the work that has happened before staff even got to the rezoning request. So this map came out of a year-long planning process, where there were a lot of online surveys, meetings in churches, people on the phone with me, door-to-door canvassing. We paid three people from the community to represent them and do engagement on our behalf. We had another 10 volunteers who, as is our practice, were the community engagement advisors, I forget now what they're called, who we had multiple meetings with and were attended with the, with the aim of sort of like keeping us honest with the engagement, so to speak. So the zoning didn't, that's where we got the idea, this map, the original breakdown of how the lines were drawn and all the colors and all that. Once it transformed from this map into an official rezoning request, we are obligated to follow the notice requirements of every other rezoning request. So there was a neighborhood meeting, we mailed letters to, there were thousands of letters because that requirement is 500 feet of all of these lines. We had these Ask Planner sessions, so extra office hours that were fairly well-attended, in my opinion, and are often very productive. We did that a second time for the second neighborhood meeting. We had the notice, same mailing for this meeting. In addition, you know, we attended quite a number of meetings organized by members of the public, so I wrote all those down in my engagement memo. So there were a lot of sort of community, community organized meetings that myself or Bynum or some other member of staff or both of us went to every single time someone asked us to. I will say, in terms of individual requests, appreciating Commissioner Bennett's concern, there has been quite a broad range or spectrum of people who have reached out outside of this venue. I do appreciate this is a very difficult format for people to get to, but there are quite a number of requests that are, you know, direct phone calls. Some of those were answering questions and that person being satisfied and never calling me again. Sometimes they were not, and they resulted in one of these requests, which eventually we will see, especially when we get towards the Western Stations, there's a lot of, a lot of those types. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, so effectively, what I think I'm hearing is that there was a general process for the overall presentation, and then as a result of feedback from the community, which is part of the engagement process, you have come up with these, this is special requests. So this is evidence essentially of the community engagement.
So these three in particular alternatives, these are, this is the venue when you're first, when you are first hearing them. We did not send special letters that we were proposing these changes. This is a reflection of, you know, us trying to listen in the planning commission meetings that have had, happened, and also all the other meetings and conversations we've been having. These were, and the engagement portal feedback, you know, all of the different channels that we try to listen to the public. This was the distillation of the major topics, in our opinion, that we were hearing. So it was detached and detached, so single-family and duplex homes, which then that text change went through its own, all the text change requirements. You know, comments about historic properties, comments about building heights, particularly in this part of the corridor. I think you've heard other people say, "Outside the belt line versus inside the belt line, there's a difference in their mind." And then a lot of discussion about NCODs. So this was our best attempt to sort of summarize the major topic areas. I think moving forward, you know, I think moving forward, you know, when we get through the next stage, you all have until December, City Council will have your recommendations on these, should you choose to vote on them. That round of outreach, which again, we are required to do, to mail to everyone within 500 feet, another couple thousand letters will go out and new signs. We will be, I'm already, can't guarantee you what my solution is, but we'll be very deliberate about what's happened here. So not only this slide, these four things, or three things, but also every request. So I'm still drafting that letter to try and get it to work well. It'll be a combination of the notice and the website, possibly, like planning, there have been these changes. It's a lot of detail to put in a letter. I printed it out, it's a lot. But yes, we are sort of sensitive to that, that this is a bit of a moving target as you have completed your review. So I can't guarantee what that will look like, but, you know, I think it'll be much more thorough than a, than a typical rezoning case where, you know.
So again, I think for me personally, I think that this is important to emphasize that there has been a significant amount of community engagement to date over several years, effectively starting as early as 2018, but officially starting.
This is a 2022, so for the rezoning on its own, so separate from the plan.
Okay, so then there's been significantly, significant community engagement and so now you have the ultimate plan and then this piecemeal approach is the result of community engagement and people coming back asking for a modification from the original plan based on those particular individuals.
That, that's how I would frame it. I'm welcome to be disagreed with as, as always. But yes, ma'am, that was the intent.
Right. Okay, so I'm just wanting to, you know, solidify that there has been a significant amount of community engagement and then this is a result of feedback. Okay.
May I speak? Thank you. Okay. May I, let me clarify. First, what I was saying wasn't a criticism of your engagement efforts. We know there's been engagement for many, many years. How the, whether or not the people most affected have been engaged is debatable. So I, I'm not, I'm not saying you haven't been out there. I'm not saying you didn't send the letters as you were supposed to. I'm not saying there haven't been a number of meetings. What I'm saying is what we're doing right now is in response to some comments that some people have made. We have heard other concerns that aren't necessarily being addressed. So we're responding to some people. When we, when you did the, the modifications for the single unit living, that went through an entire tech change process that had its own engagement, correct? So that went back to the community to talk about, to shape, to, this doesn't have the benefit of that. We're sitting at the table and we're going to vote yea or nay and we're going to recommend that it's going to go to council, there'll be a public hearing. That's not the same as going out to the community. So that's what I'm talking about. I'm not critiquing what's been done. I mean, that, you, you did that effort. I'm just saying I'm uncomfortable with the way this is being done. And we have heard comments about engagement at some of our earlier meetings. We have heard comments about who was involved and who was not involved. I don't think the, because we send out thousands of letters, I wouldn't call that engagement. I would call that notification. There's a difference between informing, notifying, and engaging. So I'm not going to get into what engagement is at the table, but I mean, we can debate whether or not there has been effective engagement of the people along the corridor who will be most affected. A lot of the people we have heard from aren't the legacy residents and business owners. They're people who will benefit from this rezoning. I'm sensitive to that as well. So I'm going to stand by my original comments.
I'd like to bring it back to the three topics here, back to the table. Historic properties, building height, and NCODs. Got some comments for support of removing historic landmarks from the TOD and I think, Commissioner Miller, you were.
Yes, and so moved, I've made a motion to remove the Raleigh Historic Landmarks from the TOD.
I can second that and I would like to make the comment that I believe that our biggest discussion here is around the big issue of whether this is appropriate or not in its entirety. And I would encourage us to dispense with these small, little adjustments quickly so that we can get to that real debate about whether we want this to pass or not in its whole. And I would suggest that commissioners thoughtfully vote on each one of these, even understanding that you might oppose the final rezoning request. If it were to pass, I think you would want it to be adjusted with as much of your input as possible for whatever recommendation goes forward. And so with that, I'll second.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. I'd like to make a vote for all, all in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, all opposed. Two passes five to two for a recommendation to the Planning Commission to remove the RHLs.
So to clarify, when I have to present this at council, the reason you're voting to not remove the Raleigh Historic Landmarks from the TOD, to leave Raleigh Historic Landmarks in the new TOD is because you oppose the TOD on the parcel, on all parcels, including these?
It's because I oppose the process by which we're doing this. And it's because I oppose the rezoning itself. And I'm happy to explain my reason if I need to. I don't have a problem letting them know.
Okay. I just, these in particular are about removing him from the TOD.
I understand what they're, what it, what, what we're doing and I, I appreciate what Commissioner Ottwell said about being thoughtful about each one. I assure you, I'm being very thoughtful. I've spent hours on this. And so I am doing what I think is proper for me.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Peeler as well. I know we talked about it at our retreat as well, just sort of stating on the record why we're voting a certain way.
Yeah, I think I'm with Commissioner Bennett. On this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd like to move on to the.
So what was the ultimate?
So we have five in favor and two opposed. So the next item is, let's move to the allowable height discussion.
So there's the historic overlay district, was that motion from Commissioner Miller for both, well, no, there was the historic landmarks and then the historic overlay district was treated separately from, from me, anyway.
Yes, you're correct. So I think Commissioner Miller, I was referring specifically to the Raleigh Historic Landmarks, removing those. And then, Mr. Maple, you're referring to the DX.
Correct, the DX and the Oakwood HOD.
So that is a, so I guess for that particular case, I would, I would recommend, I would support a motion to, to rezone that to, those areas to DX, if you want to bring up the slide that indicates that. So those properties with the intent that it would benefit overall the, the use of, and functional use for those buildings along that corridor. So with that, I guess I would make a motion to include those HODGs as rezoned to DX as part of this.
I'm sorry, is that essentially saying leave the request as is? Can you reframe it to that? Because otherwise, it sounds like you might be changing it.
Thank you, yes. We would recommend staff's recommendation, option A, to not adjust the request.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. For voting, I'd like to, raise your hands, all in favor. There's five, all opposed. Two, motion passes to the Planning Commission, five to two.
And for this one, I will say, it goes to my larger concern, but I'll keep the comment specific to this. I would be interested in knowing the effect of rezoning those parcels to DX. How is it going to affect not only those parcels, but the parcels around it? Without knowing that effect and if it's going to accelerate gentrification and the displacement that can come with it, then I wouldn't support that.
It's noted, thank you.
Commissioner Peeler, do you have any other comments about your vote? Okay.
Okay, moving on to the reviews for the max, maximum building height. There were three alternates provided by staff. One, keeping as is. Two, changing portions of it to three, four, and five. And others to not change the height, keeping everything at three. Is that, is that correct?
Right, to not, to not increase the height at all, just to sort of round out the.
Right. So I'm bringing that back to the table for discussion. I'm sure we have some thoughts, comments on, on this topic.
So I'm, I'm a little confused on what we're, we're, this is the first one where we're choosing between three choices, not two, correct?
Yeah, well, to, yeah. And to be fair, there are however many parcels are on the screen here, 300, there's technically 300 ways to do it, right? So the, the proposal that was submitted with the request had two different height scenarios, two different height levels, three and five. There is just the option to leave it all at three, not increase it at all. That's C here, kind of wanted to at least give you the spread of, of what was available. And then this was sort of a middle, a middle alternative that we came up with based on that, what I walked through before. But, you know, if you say, well, like this should all be five and this should be four, I mean, the rezoning can be parcel-specific, should that be the will of the commission. My attempt at these criteria was to give you some at least guidelines of how to think about it or give me, to be fair, give me guidelines of how to think about it to present to you. But if there are things you think are different or more important, then that could be a vote.
I think that I'm going to end up supporting option B here and we can make a motion for that when it's appropriate. My major concern with the rezoning is that, given enough by right entitlement, it removes the incentive to utilize the bonuses that the TOD provides. So if we give them all the height they want for development in the first place, then there's no incentive to add those extra few stories. And affordable housing development occurs, seems to occur in very specific type of forms and it's right there around the three to five story range. So I, I don't want to see the corridor remain single-story and two-stories. I think we'll get a lot of single-family homes with the gentrification that is currently well underway in all these neighborhoods. That's going to be my reasoning for supporting option B.
Thank you, I agree with it. And I wanted to thank staff for making that change. I know that we heard a lot of these concerns in this area, both from the homeowners and the neighbors for their reasons and then also from a policy standpoint about encouraging the affordable density bump. So thank you for presenting and making those changes based on that feedback.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I know we talked about the density bonus and the heights quite a bit. I'd be firmly in favor of C, keeping it three for this, for similar reasons, though, to what Commissioner Ottwell said. I mean, if we're going to use an affordable density bonus at all, ever, and we know that affordable development is always at five and under, basically, I'm not sure how we would expect to give away, again, give away that density for free. And, and especially in a TOD that's large, there would be nothing in the corridor, or sorry, no way to ever get, you know, voluntary conditions for affordable housing after that. So I think three makes the most sense, given for what we've got and given the way our current density bonus is written, which is, you know, 50% of additional stories, the three to five with the, the way it rounds up, makes the most sense to me. And yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of going that, that route.
Commissioner Raver?
Yeah, so what I don't see in option A, B, or C, and although there's been some conversation around this, so I'm curious where we landed on it, is the transitions for heights. I mean, I'm just looking at and met with some of my fellow commissioners sort of offline before this meeting and sort of going through this personally where there's some proposed development adjacent to my house and I have similar concerns about, about proximity and height and having discussions with those folks about that. So I'm curious, one, if there is not planned to be any text around transitions, how this map was determined between three, four, and five? Because on, on certain areas, there's three stories adjacent to single-family home and other areas, there's four and other areas, there's five. It seems a little bit arbitrary to me.
Yeah, so I think, just to sort of recap again, the easiest ones to, to think of quickly are the, the five that stay here. These are all the large, bigger than a half acre. So this, this is all common ownership. They submitted a request separate from this. You know, the city now purchases this, this is all common ownership, the city owns this. These are all relatively large lots, given the context of this portion of the corridor. The other sort of threshold that was used is this minimum lot area for an apartment building. So in the TOD, not in the TOD regardless, to build an apartment building under the UDO, you need 7,500 square feet of lot area. So for the, the, the parcels that are bordering other residentially zoned, those are all bigger than that. They might not be shaped square, like some of these are, are sort of narrow and deep, but technically have the square footage to do that. These ones do not. They're smaller or they were already set to be three. But there are a couple over here that are smaller, you could not build an apartment building. So you'd have to buy more than one lot to do that, but these ones you could. And then for the lots that were still, were small but in the middle, for lack of a better term, of the corridor, so TOD, not on a boundary, like you're saying, a transition, TOD on either side. Even though they were small, you could not put an apartment building there per se. We're not on the, on the edge. So other comprehensive plan policy, you're used to hearing about, like edge and transition, thinks about one zoning touching another type of zoning. So that was sort of the technique thought of here about like the, the TOD overlay follows all of the, the lots that are colored in, right? So did sort of consider the ones at the edge, more likely to be three when they were small, potentially four if they could be, accommodate larger development under the UDO. And then the ones in the middle, even though they were small because they were in the middle, you know, treated more like three, four. So that is a bit of a, you know, you could get error on either side of that. If you, if you agree that that is a good, that apartment square footage is reasonable to think about, that could be a harder line. I did kind of balance what would have been a transition policy with regulation, which are not the same thing, but to come up with this approach. And again, there could be a motion to have this, but, you know, D or E or whatever, some other height scenario other than either what you saw have been seen all along, which is three and five, or nothing, which is just three. So like if that were a harder line, that's 7,500 square foot. So like, if that were a harder line, that's 7,500 square foot, for example, you could, you know, potentially tell me to come back with that map and see what that would be like.
But that makes sense, thank you. And I'm sorry arbitrary probably wasn't the right term, because I know you're not just throwing, you know, spaghetti at the wall. So arbitrary probably wasn't the best term, so I apologize for that. But I still am curious, because there are large, there are areas where there are a large number of adjacent lots, that a portion of those could be purchased. And without a transition, until future site plan or rezoning occurs, there could be, and if we maintain the density bonuses, there could be a five, six, seven-story building adjacent to a single-family home at that time. And I know we've struggled with this in some of the other districts, and so I'm just, I hear you when you say, well, the transitions occur when it's two different zoning classifications that are adjacent. But my sense, without really understanding any unintended consequences, is that if you tell me you've already looked at that, and you don't think the transitions are reasonable, then that's one thing. But I have a strong sense that I would like to see some consideration around that.
Sure. So the transit overlay district, so without the TOD, without the transit overlay district in place, when mixed-use zoning is touching residential zoning, there is the neighborhood transition, the Zone A, Zone B, Zone C. The TOD does reduce those requirements, so it does lessen those transitions. If that is a concern, that would have to be a change to the TOD, to the district itself, similar to the, or identical to the single-family home duplex that we went through. Could totally be a recommendation, you know, should you wish to vote on it. But if you were concerned about that topic now, then, yeah, I mean, I did defer towards lot size on the edge, if the transition is of a concern. And then you wanted to make a motion that were to defer more towards the edge case being three? So three, someone could build a three-story building. If there were affordable housing involved, it could be up to five. So because the bonus is a percentage of the base, if the base is lower, the bonus is also lower. So three could be five, that's the highest it could be, four could be six, and five could be eight, right? So that five scenario is really the DMV, which the city now owns, Zax Gas, which the city now owns. I fully expect us to go through their own RFP and rezoning process for those. Definitely the DMV will have a rezoning request. Zax Gas, a little less clear. You know, that's the library, so that's just there because it's bigger than half an acre. Don't expect Wake County to really do anything dramatic. And then Explorer School, they did submit an independent request, and these property owners did submit a different request. So those are the tallest of, so five up to eight. And then, yeah, so if, you know, there were some tweaking of this middle ground to get at some other concern that you had, or you didn't think I treated strongly enough in this scenario, I can come back. So for instance, like, basically, all of these edge could stay at four, if that's what I'm understanding, hearing from you.
I think you're hearing it correctly. I want to be sensitive, though, because I know we've got a lot to get through. If there's a motion, and the majority of the commissioners are ready to vote it through, I can just as easily recommend denial and give my reason why versus holding it, since we're going to go through another public hearing on this.
If it's okay, I just want to make one more comment about affordable housing. Typically, you won't see affordable housing through at least the low-income housing tax credit program, or using some HUD products to develop more than four stories, and particularly not six. It becomes cost prohibitive for multifamily developments that are strictly affordable. You know, if you get into six, you're kind of getting into different construction types, and then also you trigger different wage requirements. So essentially, are you incentivizing affordable housing then in this? Maybe not necessarily, because they're not going to go over four anyway, typically, in a traditional low-income housing tax credit. I think some of the things that you're perhaps wanting to open the city up to is opportunities for more, the introduction of more unique housing style types, where if the developers going wants to take advantage of that height, and they can do so by intermingling affordable housing, which I'm a huge fan of, into conventional, I just want to make that point, that this is not necessarily going to incentivize anything from the existing programs, like the low-income housing tax credit program.
Right. Right, that's entirely true. I will say, if I may, that we fully have heard from affordable housing developers that they would use the TOD, especially if they don't have to go through the rezoning process. So if this were in place on a, so, for sure, for sure. However, the bonus was not ever really designed to make people who are already developing affordable housing develop more. It was to get people who are developing zero, so private property owners getting no funding from anybody, to develop units on their own. Just to be clear, I mean, we do think, you know, the affordable housing developers of the world, if they are in a TOD, will think about that height bonus, absolutely. Especially if it comes at no cost, like, if they don't have to rezone, and they can just think about it, they will for sure meet, you know, the 20% of the bonus floors requirement, and the length, and all that kind of stuff. But the bonus was never meant for them. It was always meant for, you know, I'm going to build what I'm going to build and rent it at market rate, and if I can get four extra units plus one affordable unit, that might work out for me financially, I might do that. It was to entice people without the tax credit or any other funding source.
Okay.
Just to sort of reiterate that.
I really appreciate that distinction, and I am a fan of, you know, diversifying product type. Thanks.
Thank you. Just from my perspective, I think that being on the corridor density is crucial for the success of this corridor. So I would recommend nothing less than, in my opinion, nothing less than option B or option A. I think keeping the option of having five stories built into the corridor is going to be crucial. Again, that's my opinion. And I appreciate Commissioner Haver's comment about the transitions. I also am concerned about having four-story building, or maybe a six-story building, up against a single-family house that's one story, maybe, you know? So I think there needs to be some language in there. I don't know what the recommendation would be, but we need to have some transition language as part of our recommendation final to council, in my opinion. So Commissioner Alwell?
Thank you. I'd like to respond to Commissioner Haver's comments. I'm generally supportive of option B, but I definitely think it could be adjusted, and I'd be happy to put this off till the next session, especially if Commissioner Haver would be willing to work with staff and come back with some specific recommendations for us to work with.
Absolutely.
All right, so let's table this into the next meeting on November 29th. Now, the...
So the next two were about the two NCODs, and really the options were, do the rezoning or don't. So the whole background was just to give you an idea of the entitlement, so similar to like you see in envision analysis for rezoning requests about rezoning today, or zoning today versus rezoning what could be or couldn't be. That's all the backup that I gave you, sort of breaking down development with the NCD, and development with the NCD, and also the TOD.
Yes, Commissioner Alwell?
Thank you. I'd like to jump right in, and I'd like to request that we consider each NCD separately, as a separate discussion.
I would agree with that. So Mr. Mabel, could we go back to the map?
Right, so there were two. There's the King Charles and the New Bernington. I think I have King Charles in here first. Yeah, so this is the sort of table. So option A is do the rezoning. Just did. Something I've never done before. Thank you. Control booth? Option A is Z92, 22 as is, so three-story development with a bonus. And if you leave the NCDs as is, then this is the requirements for this particular one. So two stories, three-quarters of acre lots, et cetera.
I'll start off on some comments.
I can go to the map of the actual rezoning request, if that's more helpful.
Yes, let's bring that up.
So the NCD is where all these little houses are. So it's these lots on the north side, this row on the south side. And then the TOD is the purple line.
This is King Charles, right?
Yes.
So just to confirm, this is 45 parcels and 43 total acres. Currently, the requirements of the current zoning require 33,000-ish square feet of lot.
Right. And a 35-foot height maximum. Which, this is the one with the foot. This one might be the two-story one, and the other one is the foot one, sorry. Yeah, two stories, right.
Open up for questions and comments on this, King Charles. Overly District?
Okay, so currently, all of them in this NCD are two stories.
The maximum is, I don't know the actual houses themselves, but yes, they're all two-story NCD.
And then, I know I'm jumping a little bit ahead, but I just want to make sure that there are then subsequent little individual parcels that are wanting to remove themselves or join in this area as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, so we're going to touch this area twice, so we're going to do the broad stroke on it first.
That is up to you.
And so, again, the option A is to go from two stories to three stories, acknowledging that with the TOD, they could go up to five stories.
Right, and also smaller lot sizes, right?
Just to ask the question, is there an opportunity to stay at the two stories with a TOD?
Not as written, no. So the code says when the NCD and the TOD are on the same lot. So the NCD is what's keeping it at two. If the NCD were not present, and these were just our six, they would have three stories already, just like the rest of the city that's owned our six. So the NCD is what has a lower height than what otherwise be. So the transit overlay district overrules that, so to speak, and we give you three as the base, and then the bonus. If you don't map the transit district, then the NCD remains in effect, and that's still two, no matter what you do. There are other, I mean, so there is a portion over here that the TOD is not in place. That's RX3 with the green plus. That was the portion I said that was kind of far between stations. So that says three, because there is no such thing as RX2 in the code, but the NCD would keep that at two. What the RX is doing there is letting us put the green plus frontage in place, that planting area. It does also allow different building types, although the building types are allowed already. This is the most confusing part of the corridor, because if you think about, it has the most moving pieces. So this portion that we are proposing to rezone, that's staying in the NCD, would still be at two, with that green plus frontage being placed. When the TOD is on the ground or applied, then it goes to three. There is no really other way to get to three. I mean, you know, like I said, there's really an infinite number of ways to do this. You could, if the NCD were to be removed, that's the only other way, that the two would be lifted to three, with or without any other change.
And in the case of alternative A, is this what was presented to the community in all of those community meetings?
Yes, I mean, we presented the rezoning request. I think I have heard some, from some community members, that they did not fully understand the scope or all the things that were included in here, and I fully admit, of the whole entire corridor, the five-and-a-half miles, the way the NCDs interact is by far the most confusing for everyone. So I just want to acknowledge that. I think I have tried, as this has become the, quote, "official" request, to communicate all of this together. I fully expect someone will say I didn't, you know, didn't fully achieve that goal. But, I mean, to go back, the green plus frontage was a direct result of members of the Longview community asking for that. And that's a rezoning. Like, if to apply that frontage that they were asking for is a rezoning, no matter what, I can't just, to get new zoning is a rezoning. So like, at some point, I hope we, at least we're all talking about the rezoning for this neighborhood. And all I can say is, we tried to be clear, all the things, the RX, the three, the GP, the TOD, all that kind of stuff, but it is, you know, a lot of letters and numbers. Fully acknowledge that.
So we have two, just to recap, we have two options for King Charles on the table. There could be any number of options and alterations and modifications to those. As a recommendation going forward, I guess I'm going to just keep it open to the table for more discussion, comments, questions. Commissioner Alwell?
I think that the removal of the NCD is justified in this case. We have nearly a mile along this corridor, which is currently going to be restricted to two stories, and mostly single-family housing kind of development that will occur here under the current development pressures. These are some of the largest lots inside the belt line. And the King Charles NCD is rather large, and this takes a small portion of it right along the corridor, right in front of a proposed station that's about to start building. We break ground in two days. I think it's absolutely crucial that there's density along this corridor here, and so I will support removal of the NCD in this case.
Just to clarify, this isn't removing the NC DOT, right? I'm sorry.
Staff has not proposed that, no. The TOD does, would take precedent over most of what's in there. So essentially, mapping the TOD...
I did misspeak. I would recommend applying the TOD in this case.
Thank you, okay.
I actually support what you said. My concern is not treating the NCD consistently. You have an entire NCD, and we're deciding to, I guess, essentially, it's not remove it, but kind of, it's...
In effect, yeah.
Yeah, in effect, it's removing it. I mean, we've had this NCD discussion before, but I just... Consistency is important. I don't feel like we're dealing with the NCD fairly. We're not being consistent, because then all these other parcels are still subject to the NCD. These along New Bern will technically be part of the NCD, but now, suddenly, they have different requirements and regulations, and so I support the spirit of what you said.
I believe that one of our previous sessions, we requested some text change language that you might bring before us as part of a comprehensive plan update that would
Right.
recommend not mapping these two kind of overlays together.
Right. So in the comprehensive plan amendment, which is agenda item number three, which I think we probably won't get to today, I did add that as a policy. So when you, when So when considering zoning change, to not have those two over each other. You know, that is for you still to vote on, recommending to council, and for them still to adopt. And again, that would be policy, so not binding, but to consider, like every other policy in the comp plan.
As a procedural question, at this point, could we recommend removal of the NCOD as part of this rezoning process?
If you, I mean, if you wanted to make that motion, sure. Yeah, council has the authority to change any zoning, right? All zoning is at the will of the council.
I just wanted to clarify, that is what we discussed, and the whole purpose of that is if the NCOD is no longer in effect in this area, then having both NCOD and the TOD mapped on top of each other could create confusion for the general public, for the property owners themselves. And I feel like, to some extent, it's sort of disingenuous to say that it's still an NCOD, but you just have a TOD on top of it. So it provided more transparency on what, in effect, was actually happening to each of these parcels. So whether we add the TOD, and just leave the NCOD and add the TOD on top, or just add the TOD, or just remove the NCOD and add the TOD, in effect, the building standards will be the same. One will just have more transparency and clarity for what's actually taking effect here. So that is, so for that reason, if we are suggesting including, if the motion is to map the TOD over this portion of the NCOD parcels right along the BRT line, then I would also support, for transparency purposes, removing the NCOD designation on those parcels as well. If everyone doesn't agree to both of those pieces, and we need to split those out into two motions, then that's fine, too.
I think I'd rather, I mean, because we're going to talk about that, the potential and the text change later, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
So what we talked about was for our specific recommendations for these rezonings, that we would make the recommendations on these parcels, and then in a comp plan amendment, it would say that in the future, if any applicant were to come forward to rezone an NCOD parcel to a TOD parcel, that instead of including two overlay districts in a way that, you know, is confusing and lacks transparency for what's really happening there, that the applicant would be encouraged instead to remove the NCOD and just apply for a rezoning to a TOD case. And we could review that as any rezoning case, like we review whenever something is being removed from an NCOD.
Personally, I'd like to see that just kind of evolve in that process of that, as opposed to taking the extra step today of removing it. I'm a little bit hesitant to do that, right, today, at the table here, but...
The other option is not to remove it.
Correct.
So if we're looking at considering a text change that gets to the same result...
It wouldn't get to the same result on these parcels. It would just be, in the future, we could avoid this problem.
Well, in the future, right. Nothing's going to happen now with the current homeowners that are there. So nothing's going to happen unless someone comes, an applicant comes forward and wants to rezone into the TOD. At which point, they're going to have to go through that process. And the, again, I know it's not arbitrary, so the rationale from staff on this is because of the density along this phase of removing the NCOD, or not removing, applying the TOD.
Right, so it's...
Basically making it ineffective.
Well, yeah, so when the Transit Overlay District was written in 2019, I want to say, the question of what happens when these two things are on top of each other? How do we deal with that, when we have one thing saying one thing, and something saying something else? So the way the code is today, the TOD overrules the NCOD when they regulate the same thing, so height, for example. So effectively, to Commissioner Bennett's point, if you were to map the TOD on this particular NCOD, these two, you are removing it. You're not, I mean, it'll still say that on the map, but staff would not consider that regulation from it to be controlling. I think the discussion we had last time was, that's confusing for a lot of people, to have so much stuff on the map and have to not know, not be certain what your rules are. So the policy that was requested last time was to say, if that is a rezoning applicant, in this case, that's me at this podium, but anybody wanted to add the TOD and there were an NCOD there, you shouldn't, and council wanted to approve that, they shouldn't keep both, because that's confusing. So again, that's not regulation, it's not a text change. It was a guidance for considering when this scenario occurs, which they could consider, well, one of staff, member of staff at the podium, or anyone else in the future.
I mean, I think generally, knowing that that text change is coming forward, which until we dig into it, I can't say, but I would generally be in favor of. I'm okay moving forward with option B. I mean, nothing's going to happen to those parcels unless an applicant comes forward. Y'all know generally, I'm not a huge fan of NCODs, but I think because this is one of the most, quote, "confusing" parts of the corridor, and we're doing these multiple overlays, to me, I would be comfortable moving forward with option B, knowing that this text change is coming forward, and to allow folks in the future who want to opt into the TOD, give them a path to do that. I know it's not done yet, but...
So to clarify, there's no text change coming. That may have been, someone may have misspoken there. Council would have to authorize a text change to that effect. That has not occurred. That was anything, that was just something that we were additionally suggesting might be included in the comp plan amendment as general policy for folks to consider if they rezone in the future to avoid confusion. So that would not, and who knows the outcome of that? When it comes to mapping our specific TOD, whether we follow that guidance and map both? If we want to add the TOD to these parcels, then whether we map, call it an NCOD with TOD, or just calling it a TOD, is something that, you know, if folks for some reason want to add those two layers, that are just, it's hard to see a benefit to that, other than creating some confusion. But if we want to continue doing that for semantic purposes, that's fine. I mean, I would...
But option A does that. Option A is with NCOD, with TOD. So if we vote for option A, we're adding to that confusion, at least in my mind. Option B, we're not applying the TOD, and in the future, if someone wants to opt into the TOD, there's an opportunity there, so...
Right, but that would be removing the TOD for this entire major corridor along... You're talking about removing all of those parcels?
No, over the NCOD. Over the NCOD.
That's what option B does, is it removes the TOD from this entire corridor.
So option B would be status quo for King Charles.
Okay, so, no, I'm not in favor of that at all, but I am in favor of it not overlapping the NCOD. So if I'm overcomplicating things, I apologize, but is there a way to remove the NCOD and leave the rest of it in there? I know we'd have to, quote-unquote, go back to the drawing boards, but that's what I personally would be in favor of at this point.
I have a question. So there is 11, I know we're getting in something that's going to happen later, when we get in the individual cases, but there are 11 parcels that have requested opt-out. The rest of them haven't really opted in, but they haven't...
Right, so if it might be, the height of these three topics, the height was really the only one where I did more work in terms of alternative rezoning requests. The rest is just more clarifying information that wasn't in the original. So like, how the COA process works, the difference between landmarks and the overlay district. And this particular one, it's just more information about rezone or don't. So A is rezone, B is don't. And for each of these NCODs, I tried to explain as plainly as I could what the outcomes of those choices are. But to your point and to the point of process, for both of these NCODs, there are individual requests. The height, I'm happy to come back and give even more options. This one, there is not really, I wrote it as alternative A and alternative B, but it's basically what's always been your options, which is approve or deny. So if it's helpful, I think probably similar to go through the individual requests, maybe that will solidify your thinking. There are requests in King Charles, there are requests in New Bernington. I have slides of all of those. Some of those people might be in the room at the time, you know, et cetera.
I don't want to go through the individuals currently.
But I mean, like, you could hold.
Hold discussion.
Yeah.
I think that'll be helpful. I will say, I'm leaning toward option A, because it, again, allows more density. Having 33,000 square feet down to 7,500 or 3,300 square feet per lot, I think makes a lot more sense along this area. But I am concerned about those specific parcels that want to be opted out, and what happens to those. And to Commissioner Miller's comment, maybe we can, you know, doesn't have to be today, but maybe after we go through the individual cases, we can craft something to council that says, going forward, if we do like option A, there's a different language that we can study as a text change to clean up how these are actually categorized. So...
I think that we can simplify it to say, like, do we want the TOD on King Charles for this mile of the BRT right here, or not? Move that we apply the TOD to the King Charles case.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to apply option A TOD to the King Charles NCOD. With that, I guess I'll say, all in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, all opposed. Three. Motion passes four to three.
Thank you, and could you provide for the record why you're voting against each?
I'll start. I'm wholly in favor of the TOD in this area. I just, I don't understand why we can't consider remapping, just to remove that confusion, get the NCODs out. Eventually, they get into the TOD. I don't want to remove it over the whole corridor, so if I've only given two choices, I've removed the entire thing, or to vote for the overlay, I'm going to have to deny. But I'm in favor of the, I'm in favor of the TOD.
So could staff clarify? Are you, is option A removing the King Charles NCOD everywhere? Is that what you're concerned that it's doing, or just along...
No, that's what option B is doing.
No, option B is to do nothing, to not do the TOD.
Correct.
Right.
I'm not in favor of that.
So option A is just applying the TODs to just those parcels right along the corridor? Not all of King Charles NCOD?
Correct, I'm just, I'm looking at, can you pull the, just the areas right there to the north of New Bern that are in the NCOD? I don't know why we can't move the purple line down to New Bern for that one section.
So this is the, this is option A.
Right.
So the Longview or King Charles NCOD, you know, goes up this way. So option A is just to map the TOD on either one, or two, or three, depending on the dimensions, and map them to RX3 with the green plus. So that's option A. Option B is to leave it alone.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I'm in favor of option C, moving that purple line you just drew down the New Bern Avenue. So that option's not up there for me, so I've got to deny the first option, because I'm not in favor of that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So you want nothing to the north?
When you say, when you say you want to move it down New Bern Avenue...
The purple line...
The purple line, you want it to extend...
That includes the NCOD. I want to remove the purple line that includes the NCOD to the north of New Bern that's proposed in the graphic that's in front of us right now.
Okay, are you saying you want to remove the NCOD?
I thought you said you wanted to extend the purple line along New Bern Avenue. So you're talking about extending it along...
You see the...
...the danger of those NCOD lots to the east?
So the lots...
Towards the hospital?
No, mm-mm, golly, sorry, y'all. It's pretty straightforward in my head, I wish I could draw it.
All I'm saying is, I'm in favor of taking this purple line that includes all these and doing this, remapping that. That's not an option. So because that's not an option, I'm not in favor of not doing anything at all, which is option B, but I'm also not in favor of option A. But overall, I would like to approve the concept of the TOD. I'll make sure it's clear in the meeting minutes before it goes to council.
Is, am I, is everybody confused? Okay.
Okay.
Into the mic.
Generally, I totally agree that density is needed along this corridor. I think that over time, as it develops, people will have the option to rezone in or rezone out. I think that removing these 40 parcels, or whatever it is, along this area is not going to change the needle with density along the entire corridor. I'm in favor of density along the entire corridor. I don't think that these are going to move the needle, especially as we're coming right out of the gate with this, as development starts to occur. I think over time, those, well, the property owners are probably going to want to opt into the TOD, but until that happens, I would just as soon say, let's not overcomplicate it. Let's remove it at this point, and let's keep moving. But that's not an option.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. York.
I just want to ask you one other question, make it understand. So you're saying the NCOD properties north of New Bern Avenue, remove them so that the purple line just runs along the northern right-of-way line?
Correct.
The NCOD properties south of New Bern Avenue, leave them in?
Take those out.
Oh, take those out?
Yeah.
Six parcels, it's not...
Okay, well, I think that's one of the options. I thought...
That's option B.
I mean...
I thought that's option B, to remove the TOD from the...
Mr. O'Haver, I'm fairly confident it's not in favor of the motion. If we're just trying to be clear what he is in favor of, I don't know if that, it's up to the chair if that's a good use of the time of this meeting, but I think I understand you, sir. Yeah.
I think I agree with Commissioner O'Haver. But also, what I'm struck by is how confused we are. And I'm thinking about the people that live in these properties, how confused they must be. And I just, I don't want to change anything. This is a perfect example of when community engagement is needed. Do these people that live in these properties even understand what's happening? Yes, they've been notified, yes, they've seen this, but are they, do they understand the implications of mapping the TOD on the NCOD? Do they understand the implications of the proposed alternative? I don't know, and I'm just thinking, if we're sitting here unable to make sense of it all, then I wonder what they're thinking. And the ones who aren't as tuned in as others, who... Density is important. I support the BRT, I support the TOD, I support the density. But at the end of the day, I'm thinking about the people that live along the corridor.
We will get to individual properties. This meeting goes till seven, I'm sorry if I didn't state that earlier.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to, to that point, like, it is confusing. And I'm looking through the presentation, M5, 8, 9, and 10 are all requests to be removed from the rezoning that have been recommended to not accept. So I know we're, I think, going to get to that later, but like, I think that is relevant to what we're talking about. There are four of these properties who specifically asked to be removed. So I don't, I think that counts for something in this conversation, in this motion, so...
I, thank you for the comments, I agree. I'm confused, trying to parse what's been said today and what's been presented as well. I don't want to spend more time on, I think we can talk about it later, but just to confirm, Mr. Commissioner O'Haver, NCOD, you want the NCOD out of the TOD, which would actually impact north and south, not just Middle Station, but beyond to the...
I'm just looking at this specific, I mean, where I thought we're taking it area by area. So I'm looking at Middle Station area two right now. And I'm making a comment on this particular graphic that we're discussing.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe the motion passes four to three.
Yeah, so the motion still stands at four to three. Yeah, so the motion still stands at four to three to the recommendation to the Planning Commission, full Planning Commission. Let's move on to the next overly district.
So the New Bern, Edenton NCOD. This one also does extend further south than I have drawn it here, so if I go to another The NCOD itself, or the entirety, looks something like this. So a couple blocks of Idlewild, all the way up to Oakwood, and then the, the southern side of, of New Bern Avenue here. So this is the city cemetery, which is why that's not included, but otherwise, the parcels fronting New Bern Avenue to the south. And again, this big pink one is the Explorer School. So I, I did sort of divide this up because we talked about these other ones in the height, the height discussion as well. But basically, this, what the regulations of New Bern Edenton are doing is a, is a cap on height. So it says 35 feet billing max, billing height maximum. If you map the TOD, that would basically be deleted and it would be whatever the zoning is and then whatever the bonus would be. So again, sort of a similar option of rezone or don't. And the, the consequences are that, that area that I just drew cannot be taller than 35 feet tall. If you do not rezone, and if you do rezone and map the Transit Overly District, it could be three or four or five stories. Or the other map, the height map, you know, whatever the bonus is.
Thanks, Mr. Mabel. So I'll open it up for questions and comments on this particular NCOD. One option is to present comments and then also do what we're proposing for, potentially proposing for the other one and have final comments after we go through each individual parcel that's requested to make modification. So those are some options here. We can, we can vote or we can propose to hold a vote until after everything is discussed at probably the next meeting. What's the will of the commission?
I think perhaps we hold these, the bigger picture questions at the table until we get a chance to look at the individual parcel requests, and then perhaps we could see a map at the end of the remaining cases left in the NCOD where we have not received citizen requests to remove them from the TOD. So we can see the full scope of what we're, what we're voting on.
Sorry.
Yep. I agree with that.
Okay.
We need a vote on that.
That's great.
We wanted to start back from, from these stations. So the individual property owners or really anyone had the opportunity to request a modification to their rezoning. The committee has already looked at the ones in the eastern station, but I'll just recap sort of the outcome there.
Before we do that, do you mind if I take a moment? Right now, I was trying to figure out the best time to do it. I know I've spoken with several of the commissioners. After we went through the first couple, we're calling them citizen requests to amend the rezoning requests, the city's rezoning request. So shorthand, we're just calling them citizen requests. After we started to go through some of those, we identified a few issues as commissioners that we needed to grapple with before we moved forward. One of them was a staff had their list of criteria for objectively evaluating these cases, and that approach is absolutely appropriate that the, the staff undertook, but we, as a commissioner, after we dealt with a few of them, felt like we needed to come up with our own criteria for handling and disposing of each of these cases to make sure we were doing so on a consistent basis. So after speaking with several of you offline, I just wanted to sort of talk about some of the structures some of, that, that some of us have come up with. As we look at these, we are, perhaps, we could separate them between those cases that want to be removed from the TOD and other reductions in entitlement, and those cases where a parcel wants to be added to the TOD or other upzoning and increase in entitlement. And because you face different issues with each. When we start looking at cases that want to be removed from the TOD and other reductions in entitlement, we've looked at potentially bifurcating those cases between residential and commercial cases, uh, commercial parcels. And for the residential parcels, we, that want to be removed from the TOD, we asked staff, and I can ask staff again here, if we were to remove any one of these parcels from the TOD that want to be removed, in the citizen request to be removed, or if we removed all similarly situated parcels that have citizen requests to remove, would doing that threaten the BRT or its funding? Staff explained to us that that answer is firmly no. So in those cases, and, and I think that's important to note because we've heard that from several folks in the public that are concerned that, oh, if you start removing some of these parcels from the TOD, you're going to start risking some of the funding and risking the project as a whole. So the answer to that is no. So given that, we then looked at the residential parcels that want to be removed and said, wanted to look at who is the party that is requesting that this parcel be removed. If it is in fact the owner of the parcel itself that wants to be removed from the TOD, from our residential parcel, as a commission, we were weighing, or not as a commission, excuse me, as individual commissioners, and we met on a non-quorum basis to discuss sort of one-on-one with, with each other, we thought that it was appropriate in those cases where it doesn't risk the project and an individual doesn't want to be included, that those individual requests be honored. However, if they're, if the requesting party to be removed is somebody other than, than the property owner, then in those cases, you know, we would look at the staff recommendations related to what they think about those, what staff thinks about those citizen requests. And then in addition to those, we were also looking at commercial properties that want to be removed from the TOD. And we, again, we asked, would removing any individual commercial parcel or all of them threaten the BRT funding or its project? And the answer to that is no. So given that case, we went on a, we tried to create a list of criteria that would sort of make sense on how to dispose of these, and instead decided that these are really best dealt with on a case-by-case basis, including an analysis of who is requesting, who, who owns the parcel and who's requesting the removal? And, you know, is it located? And perhaps we might look at a request differently if it's a, depending on, you know, if it's sort of an institutional business that has been here and part of the culture and fabric versus perhaps if it is not, and it is directly across from a station or in some other kind of critical area that, that we treat those perhaps differently and look at it on a case-by-case basis. And then the second issue is looking at parcels where the requesting, the citizen request is to add a parcel to the TOD or other increase in entitlement. We saw several of those in this eastern station area last time. And I think all of us began to get uncomfortable about the process for increasing entitlement or adding something to the TOD. We were concerned about the fact that citizens, that the neighbors had not been notified to these citizen requests on a mailed basis. We also were concerned that basically proper process had not been followed, and in several of those, the cases are complicated, maybe they needed to add conditions, we needed a staff report, we needed to better understand what was happening. So our first instinct was to say sort of any increase in entitlement or addition to the TOD due to process reasons, those should, instead of granting those here, we should just instead deny those and make those go through individual rezoning cases. I then talked with staff about what the process for those upzonings, what, for public notice would be. And so again, as, as we discussed here, if the planning commission were to approve a citizen, were to recommend the approval of any citizen request to be added to the TOD or other upzoning, then in those cases, the city would mail new notice to all affected parcels of that new planning commission recommendation. In addition, obviously, there have been several meetings held here with lots of public notice, but I liked the fact that, that then we would, new notice would be mailed. In addition, staff would hold new ask-a-planner sessions, which could allow individuals to meet with staff and review those issues. And then that new notice with these recommended changes that are mailed to everyone would then be heard by the city council, and we expect that there will be numerous public hearings related to those. Council has already talked about sending it to committee to provide additional avenues for even more public comment. So with that, we then went back and sort of amended, perhaps instead of just denying all of those, instead, we look at those on a case-by-case basis and with some of the criteria being, is this request directly going towards the city's Transit Overly District goals, or is this really something else that's just trying to go through this similar process? And then number two, if, is this a case where we would want to study or have additional analysis beyond what's already been performed? Like, is this a staff report? Do we need to better understand the implications on the ground or to the neighbors? And then number three, such that a staff report would be warranted in this case? And then number three, is this the kind of case that's complicated and where we would want to add conditions to any individual rezoning case? And if any of those three are the case, then those would be more properly, more properly dealt with on a, on a individual rezoning basis with a full staff report and public hearing in that way. So with that, I just wanted to share that with some of the things that we were thinking about. And I was thinking, I know it takes extra time to start talking about those criteria, but if we, as a planning commission, could spend a bit of time on, on some of those ideas, maybe we could dispose of the cases not only efficiently, but on a, making sure we do so on a consistent, coherent basis for the rest of these. So any, so with that, I'm very curious on the process and other thoughts the folks have here.
Commissioner Miller, would you allow me to perhaps summarize?
Please.
And you can tell me if I'm right. I, I think that the bottom of this process comes down to if the individual property owner requests to be removed for a residential property, for their own property, that we can just dispose of those en masse by approving them. And the rest of the cases, we will still look at on a case-by-case basis.
For residential parcels, yes.
Residential parcels.
Not, not the commercial.
I could be on board with that, but I want to be able to hear the residents that are here today to speak if we were to go that route for just looking at the residential and doing one.
For sure.
I agree.
So just to recap, the first order would be just to en masse approve the city's recommendation for the applicants who are asking to be removed from the TOD.
Effectively removing their, like, for those that have wanted to petition to the city that they be removed, if the city is granting that approval essentially, I would be on board with that approval as well, but I want to hear what folks are saying who are here. If that's what the.
To be clear, the city recommendation for many of these cases is to deny the citizen's request to be removed. And we would go against that and say, approve the individual's request for their residential property to be removed from the TOD and the rezoning.
Okay. Then if I'm, if that's what you said, then then I am in agreement with that.
I would support that as well. Commissioner Bennett?
I feel a little bit of a disadvantage because I wasn't part of the discussion that apparently commissioners held to come up with these criteria, so I'm trying to keep it in my head.
I was not part of that discussion either.
I thought I was going to have to chair the previous meeting about all of this, so I was trying to figure out how to batch these with staff.
So when Commissioner Miller talks about "we," it's not all of "we." I just want to be clear on that. So just hearing it all now. Could you summarize it again, please?
Sure. There are several different cases, like, commercial versus residential, whether you're requesting for your property or somebody else's property. And for almost everything, we decided that we had to look at it case-by-case. But in the case of a residential property owner that wishes to remove themselves from the rezoning and keep their current zoning and be out of the TOD, and they've requested to be out, that we will just grant those, all of them. Everything else, we'll still look at one by one and assess as we see fit.
Okay. I, I think I could get on board with that.
Do I have public comment? Should I have a map of the residential, because they're not in this area?
So in the interest of time, it's eight sixteen, or six sixteen.
What?
I'm using eighteen, sorry.
How many people on the commission can stay here till 6:30 or beyond? Okay. So let's continue. Fifteen minutes. So I guess I, I'm not sure how to best proceed with that. Can we just have a motion to say all of the owners?
Sure.
Well.
Do you want?
I think it might be, I would actually think, I just kind of wanted to talk about some of those criteria for how we're going to deal with some of these, and then still go on a case-by-case basis if we could. I mean, I think we can dispose of them pretty quickly once we figure out.
Yeah. I mean, if it, it sounds like you're in agreement, we can still show the slide and then just, it is up to you about how quickly you want to go, or I can still go through the slide and remind you of what you just said just now? Just, just to still see them all, you know, and have a description.
I would like to, at the last meeting, we, we reviewed eastern station area requests. We did not allow for public comment at the time. I wouldn't like to open it up for public comment on just those, at this point, just those specific requests for any of the members. How many members are here for the eastern station?
This is outside, this is east of, east of the interstate.
So, so there's no public comment for any of the eastern station cases to be removed or added? Okay.
Okay. We keep, move to the middle? That, the direct.
Let's move to middle station one.
Well, since we're on the slide, so we did discuss M1 and M2. Those were both requests to increase the height. So this one you did vote on. The staff, the Z92 is RX5 with the TOD. The property owner requested RX12. And the committee, the whole, recommended that they do not accept the property owner, the citizen request, as you called it. The second one is the same, but staff, the Z92 is for RX7 and CX7. The property owner is, citizen request is for CX12, and the committee did vote to recommend that one. And the CX12 would make it consistent with the rest of that cluster of 12. It's on that sort of intersection, so to speak. So those were your, were last time. This is the, the next fresh one, M3. So this is not proposed to be rezoned at all. So this is not NC92. It is R4 with the King Charles NCOD, and the property owner has been requested to be included and to have RX3, which is the same property as the district, as the neighboring property, and the Transit Overly District. So staff has no objection to this inclusion. There's this sort of false in-between the gap of the, the two widest, widest spaced BRT stations, which is why it was not included in the first place.
Would you like to open up a comment? Since it's an upzoning.
Let's give it a go.
It's an upzoning to add to the TOD. You're going to open up to comment? It's an upzoning to add to the TOD, you're going to open up to comment?
So M3. So this would add to the rezoning and upzone R4 to RX3, using the criteria.
I think we talked about from a process standpoint, if someone's looking to upzone or add to the TOD, then we would open up comments to both sides in this meeting for any upzonings.
Yes, thanks. So for each upzoning, we'll do two minutes for those in favor and those opposed each. So are there any, for this case, M3, 101 North, are there anybody here to speak on this case? Seeing none.
I'll speak against it.
Come again?
I'll speak against it.
Come to the mic, please.
You don't have the neighbors here, so how would it be?
Come to the mic, please, Bob.
It's public comment, it's public comment for and against this particular product.
Okay, so I'm back, Bob Geary. I have no idea if I'm for or against this because I don't live there, and I don't know anything about this site, but you're opening up comment for opponents. Why would there be any opponents here? They don't even know this, you're going to consider this. I'm done.
All right, I guess I'll bring him back to the table. Open it up for questions and comments from the commissioners.
Yeah, I mean, I think I kind of echo Mr. Geary's sentiment, but also, you know, we don't know anything about this property necessarily. If it, I mean, it says low-scale residential on the FLUM, but my concern with doing this this way is we open this up to doing this in a lot of other ways, especially when there are tenants there that, and, you know, there's people that are low-income renters, there's a lot of low-income renters in this corridor, and if we're allowing these particular requests in these single spots, that is a great way to get working class and poor people evicted. And if we're only doing it by property owners, not by tenants, for example, they would have no standing, just because they don't own the place that they live in. And this just seems like it owns, it opens up a whole new can of worms of putting people at risk of displacement. So that's, that's my thoughts on one particularly like this.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I think I agree. I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the other property owners and community engagement and tenants and what Mr. Geary said, and could there be a way for the ones that are being asked to be added, could there be some sort of notification sent to those property, the, whoever's within the notification boundary? And then we could have a process by which people could be for or against. I just feel like it's, it's true, there, there wouldn't be anybody here for or against if they didn't know that their neighbor is asking to be at it.
Yep, so the, the short answer is yes. The way I would do that, though, is through the mailed notice. So we will, these people have and will receive mailed notice already, and it is technically possible for me to send, if you are expanding Z92 to include people who were not adjacent but now become adjacent through, like, this person was not touching, right, for example, yes, I can send them a letter that says, this is different than we talked about before. Whether or not you think the mailed notice, like the letter we send, is sufficient, that's up to you, but that's how I would do it.
Would that happen before we made a recommendation?
That would be for a public hearing.
Right, so given your deadline, we don't really have time for the logistics that are required for the notification that you want during your review, right? So you'd need to make a decision based on the information you have at hand, and then there would be notice, and we are planning additional Ask a Planner events in anticipation of the public hearing.
Yeah, and I will probably do that regardless. So like, these four people will probably get a letter from me that says, you know, there has been a change to the request for a property adjacent to you, whether or not you recommend on this case or any other like it to support or not support it. I think that's what we decided how we would notify people that, you know, the, the life of a zoning case, it changes the planning commission all the time, that's the point of planning commission. In this case, it is, this particular case is changing a lot because it is very big. So that is the way we can offer to sort of refresh what we're telling people is under consideration. That's sort of the most specific, like, given the timing and the, the effort of the, to get all these properties that are, that are in this situation, it would be through the letter, which I can and will do, but you may or may not think that's sufficient.
Yeah, I think that's really the only thing you can do at this point. So I'll, I'll, I will, speaking for myself, participate in this individual by individual request, but I will put on the record my deep concern with the way I spoke about process earlier, with the way this is being done. I mean, I have, I have a little heartburn about the way it's being done, but I understand we have a deadline. I don't like putting deadlines above people's livelihood, but, I mean, I'll work with what I have, but, but I'll just state very strongly that I don't, this isn't great engagement with the community. And, you know, the property owners around these parcels that are going to be upzoned, I don't feel like are getting the opportunity to participate fully in the process.
Commissioner Alwell?
Thank you, Chair. I agree that this is an imperfect process. I don't think that the city does a really great job at community engagement across a whole broad range of issues, and we have to work with what we got. And this is the process we're given. These requests have been on the public record for months, so I've had a chance to study these, both online and through the property records, and I've driven out and checked out these requests to be included. I think that, in this case, the proximity to the corridor, it's directly on the corridor, and it's adjacent to other properties that are going to be remapped, and I think this is appropriate to include. And once everybody's had their comments, I'll move to accept this one.
Thank you. I was going to say, if there are some of the things we talked about for any of these upzonings, if, that we, that I was thinking about when I thought I, in a previous meeting when I was going to chair before it was canceled, was for any of these upzonings, again, if the were, if it seemed like this was directly related to the city's goals with the TOD, number one. Number two, if it seemed like we would want additional study or analysis beyond what's already been performed. Or number three, if it seems like this was a case where we might add conditions. This might be the case that this, given its proximity to single-family homes and neighbors, and where we don't fully understand the impact of that, this could fall under the case where it's the second case, where it's additional study or analysis. We might want that here beyond what's already been performed. So I could see this case kind of going either way, to vote, from a process standpoint, that this might require its own separate rezoning, despite the fact that it is in line with the goals of the city's TOD.
Is there an option to do no recommendation on these?
Sure, absolutely.
Personally, I would feel more comfortable with that, because I don't, I mean, I don't necessarily want to vote to deny a property owner if I would be in favor of it, just because I don't like the process, but I don't want to accept it either without the neighbors having the benefit of the notification. So if they're going to have an opportunity to be noticed after we make our recommendation, and then they have the Ask a Planner opportunity to speak with you, and then they have the public hearing with council, I would be most comfortable just not making a recommendation on these at all, and letting council.
For any of the adds, I would be on board with that. For any of the ones that want to be added, I would be on board with no recommendation at all.
Commissioner Bennett, just confirm recommendation on, on only adds for residential and/or commercial, or recommendations for any request from a property owner.
To add a parcel to the TOD, is that what you're?
To add a parcel to the TOD.
Add a parcel only.
Because I think that's a bigger change than removing themselves. I think adding the parcel, I would be comfortable, most comfortable, with no recommendation.
Okay.
I would be on board with that as well. Commissioner Bennett, do you have a distinction between residential and commercial?
None, if they're requesting to be added.
Okay, so it'll all be the same? Okay.
To be clear, and if we do not produce a recommendation for these requests to be added, would they still get a notice that they're, would their neighbors still get a notice they're potentially?
Yes, sir, so I will, for this one, and also in the eastern, and maybe that's an easier example. Sorry. So for instance, this person in the corner there was not touching the TOD and now is, they will get a third version of the letter. There's a version for all the owners that say, you know, and then they're, you have a property that's in the rezoning. There's a version for all the neighbors within the distance that says you are within the distance. So I can and will create a third version for, and like, these properties down here, these ones over here, that say, the person who owns land next to you has requested something, regardless of what planning commission thinks of it. That was the sort of our response to, to the questions from, from Commissioner Miller about like, the notification going forward. So you have to be comfortable that council will, that will happen at the council process. Now, council does not have your deadline, so they, they can, if they choose to extend it, to do some other engagement with those people or with anyone else. But again, you have to be comfortable leaving that up to them. But they, these people will at least get a letter that says, this request is different since the last time you got a letter like this. Yeah.
I don't think that any of these additions are necessary for the success of the corridor. And if, in the, in consideration of the time that we're spending on this, and so that we could get to more important issues, I'd be happy to do this for all of the recommendations to be added.
I, I like that approach as well, with the one exception that there are several requests to be added to the TOD that are not contiguous with the TOD, and some of those I might be comfortable just outright recommending denial of those.
What about M2, where they're, they're in, but they're asking for additional height on there? What, what would your approach on that be?
I think that's still case by case.
Okay, so it's just the parcels that are going to be opted in?
When we're changing the perimeter of the TOD, yeah.
And then, help me, I felt like, Commissioner Miller, where you were going with this criteria, because I think this is a great, sort of great example here, that you've got staff is recommending to accept a request on M2, but to deny the request on M1, which are adjoining parcels and the same applicant. So I understood we were going to go through the criteria that was utilized to make those decisions first, to understand that, because if we're going to go case-by-case basis, and we're being asked to make a decision, I mean, clearly, staff has put time and effort into it, and they've, they've made a recommendation. I'd like to understand the criteria for which they are making that recommendation. Wasn't that where we were going at the beginning, or did I misunderstand that?
No, there's staff criteria, and then, and Commissioner Miller offered some additional focus criteria for residential versus commercial, owned versus not owned, that we can, we can apply to, and as we go through case by case.
So since we're a legislative body, not a judicial one, we're not bound by those, whatever the specific standards are given to us by staff or by these rules, we get to use our own, what's, what we think, our own standards, including what we think is reasonable and in public interest, and so that's why we can also evaluate some of our own standards. But some of them, I think, that staff uses, I think, are important and critical, including for those that want to be added to the TOD, is the parcel contiguous with the proposed TOD? And if it is, I think it's, we're saying to vote that through with no recommendation to council, because we're concerned about the process that has not been followed here in terms of notifying the neighbors. But to, to staff's good point, if it's not contiguous with the proposed TOD, if there's a citizen request to add something to the TOD and it is not touching the TOD, I personally would, would vote, be comfortable just voting in denial of, of those cases.
But if we do bucket them like this, then we'll have to go through that process anyway, and at that point, they would have had public comment. So I think either way, if we need to move forward, I'm fine moving forward and allowing them to experience that. You know, they may change their mind, you know, based on this feedback, too. So I would make a recommendation to move forward if we can on these, if this is a bucketed approach. Are we looking to, when are we looking to vote? Because I was anticipating we would kind of clear out the residential side first and have public comment on that side, and then vote. But I think, I mean, it looks like we're trying to tackle all of this at once. I would rather kind of say, okay, we made a decision on here, open it up for public comment, put that aside now, and then, and put our vote.
I would suggest, we, I mean, we still go case by case, but now that we have this criteria, that these, these certain cases are going to be, if they're added, we're going to, we're not going to make a recommendation on those, we'll just vote not to make a recommendation and move on to the next case, and still allow for public comment for each, each one.
Just in case our bucket creation missed a nuance of a specific case, we could still look at each one individually, but I think it'll make the rest of our process more efficient, even just this conversation we've already had.
We've got 20 minutes.
Yeah, given that we, I want to make sure, Chair, that, I mean, it's 6:40. We have people who've been here since 4:00, and they've said they want to speak. I just want to make sure that they haven't, they don't sit here for three hours and don't get to speak. So can we move, I know we're trying to proceed in an orderly fashion, but is it possible to move their properties up so we can hear from?
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. I would like to actually ask the audience, who is here for which case, and we can proceed with two minutes for and against. So if you can line up and just, and then, Mr. Maybly, I would just request that you bring up there.
Drive the slides as best I can.
Come on.
And we'll try to get through as much as we can, and I'm not guaranteed we can get through all comments.
I probably can do all this.
But please. State your name, address, and which number.
My name is Phyllis Barber, and I, my husband and I live at 104 Lord Ashley Road. We live directly across the street from Longview Garden Shopping Center, so we are, we are the people that you are talking about that's right in that square. First of all, thank you for your service on the commission. We do want to be removed from the TOD. I've been involved in the New Bern Avenue Improvement Issue since 2012, and served for some years on the New Bern Avenue Quarter Alliance. We have lived there for 30 years. We've raised our family there. My husband grew up in Longview, so he has 50 years of experience in the community. We live directly across the street, as I said, from Joseph's Pharmacy and Longview Shopping Center, so we're already used to commercial development being near us. And I think what I, I've, I've been present for all of the community meetings, but maybe one. I've been a community organizer that has encouraged residents to become involved in this, because I told them that the city was listening and would faith and would apply their, that this community-driven project would be a good way for us to work together. So we were really surprised in November of '22, when we received the rezoning letter, because in every single meeting, we have talked about a nuanced application of the TOD that concentrated on our commercial and emerging property availability. TOD that concentrated on our commercial and emerging property availability along the avenue, and it skipped over existing community, existing neighborhoods. And this was actually on the city website for months and over a year, that it was very unlikely that the TOD would be applied to existing neighborhoods. I'm sure we can go in the Wayback Machine and find it for you. So that's why we were stunned, and we had requested that nuanced application, and consideration of transition zones, some people are raising that today, I appreciate that, between higher-storied buildings and existing dwellings, setbacks that made sense for the old sitting next to the new, and for an understanding that lots on New Bern that are part of these communities wanted to remain part of these communities. The city, I, I feel like one of the things I want to impart to you as you make these decisions, that you're talking about land that my husband and I have worked for years and years and years to nurture and cultivate. And so, you know, you have to remember that, that what the message you're sending to me is my way of life is no longer part of your vision, that my way of living is not part of the city's future. And I join Octavia's communities now in a different way, because now I know what it feels like to have city planning and policy move away from that goal. So I just would ask that you approach this in a nuanced, phased approach, and that you consider giving yourself permission to step back, because the text changes that you're taking up now are city reshaping policies that will be remove more, that will remove citizens from engagement further. So I just would implore you to consider a phased approach, because this is clearly complex. There would be more residents here, but the times of the meetings are difficult to manage to get to the planning commission, and citizens, no matter what their education level, are now completely overwhelmed. They don't even know how to navigate the websites to be able to put in their request for removal. Thank you for the gracious extra minutes on the clock. I appreciate it, and I will remain here for a minute in case you have a question for me, as someone that's actively advocated for the BRT and has just been surprised by some of the movement. May I offer any feedback to you, and I promise I'll be polite.
Thank you. We'll, we'll move on to the next.
Do we want to vote on M8? That M8 case?
I mean, we can. I don't know if we were going to do it all.
Okay. I mean, I think that was one of the ones, it was just a residential parcel that wants to be removed, and we had agreed that those would be removed, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. They want to be removed, I would recommend acceptance of the removal from M8 from the TOD.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand.
To grant the citizen request?
This particular request, my, my concern is, we don't know who's standing in line to speak here, and if we start making decisions on one and not another, I don't think that's going to go over well. I think with the amount of time we have, I will do whatever the Chair and Vice Chair want to do. I'd like to hear from the public, we're making notes, we're definitely going to see all this again, but I, I don't disagree with you, this is one where I'm totally comfortable saying it's removed, I just don't know who else is standing up there and what my response is going to be.
You bring, you bring a good point on this case. If the owner wants to be removed, I think the criteria was, we would allow them and request, and accept their request to be removed. Other cases? Okay, yeah, thank you, Madam. If, is anybody here opposed to that previous case, M8? No one opposed, so I guess we'll let the, let's vote again, right? So for the removal of M8, all in favor? Two, three, four, five, unanimous. Thank you. Thanks for your patience. Please, if you can say your name, address.
I'm Casey Bush, and the property that you have listed up here is 109 Lord Ashley, which is spelled wrong, Road, and I requested to have my home, not my lot, not my parcel, but my home to be removed from the TOD overlay. It was, you know, a great opportunity to speak with you today. I came here with the full intention of understanding that I would be speaking to you, knowing that the recommendation was that my request to be removed from the overlay was not going to be accepted. And so instead, what I wanted to do is just to talk about the process and my hopes for what this looks like going forward. Like many homes in this area, right, this is a historically significant home, it is the home built by Cliff Benson, if you're familiar with the Cliff Benson Belt Line, that is of the same family who built my home in the late 1940s, and that was a pretty prominent Raleigh family. It is the most solid home that I've ever lived in. We moved into this home seven years ago so that my kid could go to Enlow High School, and I wanted to live in a really historical residential neighborhood with lots of trees and lots of great people to be around me. What I did not do is, I did not buy a house where I would be living next door to a five-story apartment building, and I think that was purposeful, and I think one of the things that we're not considering when looking at all of these blanket, you know, kind of overlays, is the integrity of these neighborhoods. And the process has not been engaging, it has been notification. I've received notifications about these changes, I've attended many meetings where the dissatisfaction with these plans is evident, and in the next meeting, that was not taken into account at all. And so every single meeting has been to inform us what is going to be happening, where people express dissatisfaction, and no one really listens, and it doesn't get taken up, and I find that really concerning and disheartening. So what I ask of this council today is that I think BRT is an amazing investment in East Raleigh, and I'm so happy that you want to do that for us. However, with this overlay process, what I request is, again, like Phyllis had said, stepping back, gathering more information. For instance, we don't know what this is going to do to traffic, we don't know what this is going to do to affordability. I'm coming from Austin, Texas, where it just exacerbated the problem, and so just please think about stepping back and gathering more information to make an informed decision.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller, before you move on.
Before you go? Oh, I just have a clarifying question, just to get very specific about what you stated when you first stepped up there, was that you don't want your parcel removed, you want your home removed. Just to know, we cannot accomplish that specifically, so we would have to vote to deny that request.
I, I want the lot removed. The point of that statement was that you are talking about this in the most depersonalized way possible. Thank you.
All right, it's on M9, I'll throw it out, the same, same thing. Does anybody opposed for this M9, 109 Lord Ashley? Seeing none, I'll bring him back to the table. Any discussions, comments?
I'll move to approve that citizen request, M9.
Second, all in favor? All opposed, passes unanimously.
Commission members, before I go any further, I just wanted to make sure, are you just asking for removals tonight, or are you asking for additions as well?
Ma'am, I think the point was to honor the people that showed up, to hear them speak.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Charles Walker, 275 North Peavert Road, Pittsboro, North Carolina. I represent the Brewer family, who have owned these, these tracts of lands for decades. The, to, that lot and that lot is purchased by, or is owned by the Brewers, and it is owned OX, OX3, and, and they also own that tract of land, which is, which is split zoned. There's a little bit of sliver of OX, OX3 on this property, as well as R10. If you go to the future land use plan for this area, this, the, the addition of that lot is, would honor the boundary of the central business district in the future land use plan. I'm not sure why it wasn't included in total, especially since it's split zoned, OX3. So what we're doing in this particular case is asking for that lot to be joined with the other two lots that the family owns, and to, and then have the transition of the, of the zoning that matches what's there. Only other two lots.
Thank you. Any members of the public opposed to this request? I don't see any. Bring him back to the table for questions, comments, or motions.
Can I ask a question? This is not about adding it, something to the TOD, is that correct?
Yes.
So this is, there are three lots in the historic overlay on the corridor that are zoned mixed-use already, 1, 2, 3. So this falls under the, they're in the historic overlay, changed the base to DX to allow more reuse, and what Mr. Walker was saying is that these property owners also own this lot, which is zoned R10.
And, and.
Yeah, and it's, it's also, okay, also in the HOD. So again, we're not proposing to map the transit overlay district and the historical overlay district together, but he's asking this to be included in the DX category.
Good night, Chair.
In general, I think that I would approve of this request, but I think it falls under our reasoning that we don't have enough information, and we would like to see more public engagement, and would move this one on with no recommendation.
I would agree with that.
So I'll so moved.
Second, all in favor of the motion?
So we're, we're moving this out with no recommendation to go to council?
So, see, hands have.
But the recommendation is, the recommendation is to have public hearing on that, correct? Or a public comment, or a new neighborhood meeting?
Ability for more public engagement.
Okay, so then that's the recommendation, no approval with?
No recommendation, but with a comment to council that there should be more engagement.
I just want to make sure that's very, very clear in the, in the motion.
Do the fact that it's not adjacent to the TOD is sort of set off.
So staff said any citizen request that is here will get new notification to all of the neighbors before it goes to council. So if we're doing no recommendation, then every citizen request will get new notification to all the neighbors before it goes to council. So we don't have to make a recommendation about citizen notification, neighbor notification.
Okay, so, just to be clear, it is in the TOD?
It is.
It is adjacent to TOD. The two lots are in the TOD, the third lot is not.
Gotcha.
But we're trying to clean it up.
Makes sense. So we were just saying that would fall under the category of things that we talked about, where we might approve it, but based on process issues, that neighborhoods were not notified previously, would rather go no recommendation, so the neighbors can be notified before council makes the decision.
Okay, yes, going back to the motion.
So.
Yeah, the, the motion was to move this one without a recommendation, with the understanding that there will be more public engagement before it gets to council.
And Commissioner Bennett seconded.
Second?
All in favor? All opposed, passes unanimously.
Before my time starts, can I ask a very basic clarifying question of the criteria, probably Commissioner Miller?
Please.
When you are separating this between residential and commercial, are you using the term residential as a building type or as a zoning type? For example, I live in a residential building in a zoning area that is not residential.
So let's, is this the case?
Yes, that is the case.
These are just sort of broad criteria, but we recognize the difference between use and entitlement for residential versus commercial, and that that may cause some issues, so that's also helpful, why we should go through them one by one.
So are you saying that the general recommendation, based on the criteria that we have heard, is that you would approve this being removed from the TOD?
I, well, let's just go through the details, I haven't looked at the details of this one quite yet, yes?
I have a house, it's residential, it is in a NCOD with OX3 zoning. It is a residential building, and I guess that's where my basic question was, is, was your recommendation, you know, Ira's recommendation was not to accept my request to remove it, are you saying now that the general criteria says that you would remove it? Because that greatly affects what I'm going to say.
Sure. Is it, just to clarify, is this a single-family home?
It is a single-family home.
Surrounded by other single-family homes?
Surrounded by a single-family house.
I, I personally would support you being able to remove your parcel if you would want that, but I would, I only speak for myself, not the rest of the.
Just provide your feedback, yeah.
Well, my feedback is, and I, and I have said this before, the idea of opting out was never something that the neighborhood really considered, because it's never been about what happens on our property, it's about what happens on the property next to us. So if I opt out, I'm not really affecting me, I'm affecting two other people. So we have a large group of neighbors that are generally opposed to being in the TOD, but you've only got like three or four requests from us, because we're the people who are throwing the spaghetti at the wall. Everybody else realizes that it's not about their property, it's, if their neighborhood, if the neighborhood isn't opted out, or if their neighbor doesn't opt out, it doesn't matter what we ask for. So I've asked for it, I didn't expect, I expect exactly what Ira has, has recommended, but I would say that I not, did not expect what you have put in your criteria, so.
Thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, thank you, I, I mean, I personally think.
Anybody opposed?
And, and if the criteria is that you're going to recommend something like that, we have four cases. I can go back and get the rest of the neighbors, I'm sure. We would rather you do what Commissioner Hevner did for King Charles and just move the purple line, you know, let us, if you want to know how we feel about the change, let us opt in, not, not be this opt-out. I mean, if you look at the way website cookies are done in Europe, it's completely different. You know, you have to accept the cookies, you don't just say, no, I don't want that. So please, let us opt in instead of opting out.
And Ira, is that something you could work with the, the neighbors on before the next meeting, perhaps?
Is what, something I could, sorry, can you?
He said there might be other neighbors also that want to request.
I'm going to have to talk with Ira about.
Okay.
How to, how, if and how we can manage that, we will certainly assess.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I, I didn't actually change the line, I just made a suggestion, and I think, I think the point is a good one, and partly why, well, secondly, the criteria is not something that was established. We have an incredible amount of cases, and we're trying to be as thoughtful and consistent as we can, it's very challenging, and I know there's frustration from folks out there, but just try to understand what we're attempting to do. And so I, I think all that criteria was, was a way for us to agree up here as a, as a board, to try to move through some of these cases. Not every case is going to be identical, that's why we decided to look at it individually. So I just want to make sure that's clear when you go back and talk with neighbors, and if folks are going to come out, I just want to make sure it's clear of what we're, what we're trying to accomplish here. And I, I, I think you're right. I mean, part of the reason why I've agreed to just move forward on these, to move these through, because there are some bigger fish we need to fry, is you opting out on your parcel, there, there's parcels all around you that are still under that zoning, and so if you want to be removed, then I'm, I'm generally, I'm generally okay with that, that's up to you, but I'm not necessarily, the NCOD notwithstanding this particular case, I'm, I'm not in favor of removing, removing the TOD along the whole corridor. So I just want to be clear on where, where my position is on this.
I don't think that the neighborhood would say that to remove the TOD from the whole corridor. Generally, the neighborhood is very favorable of the BRT, it's very favorable of the TOD, but it does believe that the TOD is better suited to low-density commercial properties and not in the middle of single-family neighborhood that we happen to be.
All right, before we continue the conversation, let's, is there anybody in the audience opposed to this particular case, W19? All right, seeing none, bring him back to the table.
I think that I would consider residential zoning separately from office zoning, this is already OX, so when redevelopment happens here, we're not likely to get single-family homes, and what we're losing, if we don't apply the TOD here, is the potential for affordable housing bonuses. So I would not be. So I would not be comfortable just blanket removing these from the, from the proposal. And if we need to move this on with no recommendation, or defer this to a later option, I understand your feelings and for everybody that's here, I'm happy to stick around after and talk about all this.
My only rebuttal is that, you know, this was an O and I one.
We're bringing it back to the table here at this point.
This is directly in front of a proposed BRT station, and I'm really uncomfortable just making the decision to remove this right now.
I appreciate that, and especially if it's going to open up, when we looked at that analysis and questions about whether this would threaten the project, it was with respect to the citizen requests that have already been received, not the ones that might be received en masse based on, based on some of this, so I certainly appreciate that concern here, and the question of residential use versus entitlement is something that we were also grappling with. I was trying to do as much work before the meeting as possible and just to figure out some of this, but I think this is an open-ended question that I think is, is more complicated than perhaps we can address right here, so if you're making a motion to vote it out with no recommendation, I would support that.
Would anybody else like to comment before I make a motion?
I, I do think that the, the location of it, right across from the station, should play into some of our decision in the criteria, if we go back to what the criteria that staff applied to it, it was very specific about the BRT location, so I do think that in this particular instance, I would, I'm a little bit more cautious just to approve this and throw it out. Not throw it out, move it forward, sorry.
I'm going to move to recommend that this go forward with no approval from the planning commission, I mean, excuse me, no recommendation from the planning commission with the understanding that there will be continued public engagement.
Second, so all in favor, raise your hands please. All opposed, no recommendation, passes unanimously.
I'm here also to talk about my next-door neighbor, W-20. Laura Hedlund is not present this evening to speak on behalf of her petition to remove her house from the TOD. Laura and her husband planned on building an addition onto their house to raise their growing family, they had a contractor and they had a permit. This summer, during the rezoning process, they changed course, sold their house and moved away. First, I'd like to say that you're getting ready to make a recommendation for a new property owner who I can almost guarantee has no idea about her property being rezoned and the decisions being made tonight.
So she did not put in the citizen request herself?
This, this requester put in a request on their property, got dissatisfied with the way this is going, and sold her house, so she is no longer the current property owner.
Does the request still stand if the person who made the request has moved?
I think that's up to you.
Well, I would say no. I mean, the person that requested it is gone.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Or at least, I mean, we don't know how the current property owner feels about this parcel, so.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Commissioner Bennett, and I would follow the recommendation from staff to not accept the request in this time.
Make a motion?
So I move to, for W-20 to, to not accept the request.
Second.
Okay, all in favor. Passes unanimously, no, no, and opposed.
Did not accept that, yeah.
The next one I'd like to speak on is W-15. Sarah Chavez is not present this evening to speak on behalf of her petition. Sarah had planned on adding on to her house when this rezoning process started and became very concerned about the TOD rules that prevented additions and prohibited single-family housing. While this text change has happened, Sarah became distrustful of the process and is not here tonight because this summer she sold her home and moved away. There is an irony that her petition will be accepted, as, that is the recommendation, but it illustrates the frustration of the neighborhood. Before Sarah moved away, Sarah informed the neighborhood that she was leaving and to let us know that she had put in this petition, she saw the removal of her property from the TOD as being part of a good neighbor because she also realized that the rezoning was not about what happens to her property, but what happens and what affects the properties beside her. Again, this goes to my point that opting in is the correct process, not opting out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members from the community who are opposed for this request? Seeing none, bring it back to the table, questions and comments on this particular item?
Similar to the last case, given the fact that requesting party no longer owns the property and we don't have input from the current property owner, I would vote to deny this case. Make a motion to deny this case.
Okay, so we have a denial, Commissioner Bennett, second. Any other discussion?
I mean, I am curious, it does still say property owner on here, but it is former property owner, we know that for...
Right, but it's...
Right, right, but it says, the requester still says property owner, so I'm just curious, like, we know for a fact that she sold the house and it's not the property owner.
If we were to determine in the future that's not the case.
There's a different owner listed in IMAPs and the sale date was June 28.
So with that, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hands, all opposed, passes unanimously.
Did you happen to check that last one too, the W-20?
That one, I, I can tell you that I noticed the property owner had changed, so that one I will confirm.
Former, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I mean, we, we do refresh this list periodically, but I, you know, cannot keep up with...
Appreciate it, thank you.
Every single transaction that happens over the course of thousands of...
Good evening, Mac Paul here on behalf of Jubilee Ventures. Unfortunately, Eric Malata could not be here, he's with Dallian. This is a little bit different perspective than you've heard, but I think consistent with some of the comments. The owner of this bought it very excited about the bus rapid transit plans, is looking to do a transit-oriented development, and has followed along the process, they had, did not ask for additional entitlement, they're going with the staff recommendation. As the, as we've gone through this process, what has been clear is there's some issues, obviously, where there's a conflict between the NCOD and the TOD, and we recognize there have been efforts to resolve that, and those are very well appreciated. I think for two reasons here, we're simply asking for clarification that the conflict be removed in this case. One reason is because we've, it's the commercial property, so a lot of the issues swirling around the conflict relate to residential properties and what might happen, and we know that conversation will continue. The second reason we'd like the NCOD to be removed and just keep the TOD is that when you look at this NCOD back in 1992, I have the ordinance right here, there are really three reasons for this NCOD. One related to the rooming houses to the north, where the city was concerned about what was happening there and trying to stabilize those rooming houses, get them back into single-family ownership and restore those properties. The other was Idlewild, which you've heard about some in these meetings, where there was multifamily development occurring and there's pushback against that, and that was part of this NCOD. The third reason for this NCOD related to the properties that were commercial along New Bern Avenue, like this property, where there was concern about suburban-style development and stripping it out, part of this was a zone shopping center at the time, so the NCOD prohibited parking between the street and the building. It actually recommended considering pedestrian business over day, overlay district, which is a precursor of TOD, so the TOD really accomplishes that aspect of the original intent of the NCOD. So again, we're not trying to make a substantive change, just greater certainty and clarity that this owner can do what is being envisioned by the BRT.
Thank you. Any community members opposed to this request? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the table.
I think that this is actually a very important case to consider, and I don't think we have time to get into it tonight, and I request that we defer this to a meeting where we can discuss it further.
Agreed, without objection, we'll move this case to the next meeting on November 29.
I'm, I'm in favor of that, but I just, just initially, I, I see an opportunity here to, to deal with the NCOD, but I think we need to talk about it a little bit further.
Agreed. Okay, so we will move this for further discussion for NCODs, thank you. Real quick, time check, we have two more presenters, are we good, okay, thank you.
Your future selves in the 29th will thank you.
Hi, good evening, Ashkan Hazani, 602 East South Street in Raleigh. I don't want to waste anyone's time, I know based on the comments everyone's made, it sounds like the, the planning commission doesn't want to make any recommendation if something is contiguous, you're just going to defer it to city council, is that, is that what I'm understanding? So with, with that said, then I have, because I have like five cases on here, I don't want to take up your time, but I just, with, with that said, let me pull up, let's see, like, with, with that said, I just want to make a, a general request that, you know, if it's not contiguous with the, with the current mapping, that, you know, we don't write it off completely, you know, speaking with, with Mr. Mabel, you know, he mentioned when staff was going through this process, they had to draw a line somewhere, and, you know, just as an example, this, this property, it's, it's already multifamily, it's a, a triplex, most of this street, North State Street, is multifamily, and, you know, the, the line going east to west along East Jones Street, some of the TOD goes all the way to East Jones Street, some of it doesn't, so I would say like, you know, that line very well could have gone up to East Jones Street, I think staff just had to, you know, I don't know why the, the line was drawn that way, but, you know, and I think there's some other cases as well where, you know, it very well could have gone, you know, one or two more parcels, so that, that's just what I want to say. Thank you.
I have a clarifying question. What parcels were you talking about specifically?
So the one I was talking about with, where it's not contiguous is this one, W-14. The other one that's not contiguous is W-8. The other three are contiguous, the other three cases, W-18, W-17, and W-28, those were, those three were contiguous.
If you're able to wait up there, I think we would vote on each one individually, correct?
Yes, I'd prefer to have votes on each number, case number.
Okay.
So any members of the public wanting to speak in opposition, seeing none, bring it back to the table, I would like to see those specific...
Go in order, this is the first one.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to comment on this one first, it is a, a request to be added to the TOD and it's not contiguous with the rest of the properties. Staff had to draw a line somewhere, and then so I understand the frustration that it's not where you wanted it to be, and, but it is where it is, and so without better understanding the impact on the neighbors, I think this needs, would need to go through a full rezoning request with the related staff report, so I will make a motion to deny W-8.
We have a motion and a second to deny W-8, all in favor, raise your hands please. All opposed, passes unanimously.
Perhaps similarly to the last, this may in fact be appropriate to be added to the TOD, but without understanding the, based on your good points about it being surrounded by multifamily, but without a staff report and better understanding what is around the neighbors in this area, I would make a motion to deny this case and instead think that it's more appropriate for it to go through its own rezoning process with a full staff report.
I second. So we have a motion and a second to deny W-14, all in favor, sorry. Okay, thanks. I second it. All in favor, all opposed, passes unanimously.
Anyone else willing is welcome to jump in here, but if not, I'll go ahead and say this one is a contiguous property, but so it may be appropriate, but the neighbors have not been notified up to this point, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to send this to council with no recommendation so that neighbors can be notified.
Second.
We have a motion to send to council with no recommendation and a second, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, W-17, motion passes unanimously.
And again, I'll make a motion for the same reasons to send this to council with no recommendation.
I second. No recommendation for W-18, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, that passes unanimously as well.
This is another one, excuse me, it looks like this one is, is contiguous but off to the side there.
Is it or is it not contiguous? There's a street between it.
It's across the street, I counted that as contiguous.
Using our same criteria as previously, I'll send this to council with no recommendation. I make a motion to, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to send this to council, no recommendation, all in favor, all opposed, that passes unanimously.
Just to ask the applicant before he leaves, did you understand what your opportunities are then with the differences between these five parcels?
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, thanks for staying a little longer. I think they saved the best for last because you get to go home after me, so, there you have it. My name is Gary Twig and I own the property on 122 Clarine and Crescent, and I want to respectfully remind the group that I made this petition back in May and I have gone to every meeting since that timeframe. Tonight's the first night I hear that there's a requirement to notify the neighbors, I'm going to address that in a second. Just, since I gave you a package before and I presented before, I try to keep this short, but I am literally one parcel away from the current TOD. So there's me and one parcel and then the TOD. This is a three-minute walk to the proposed bus station, so to me, it falls within the purview of your stated objectives to have a higher-density property there. We have a choice before us because I can go ahead with the plans that we're already permitting to build a more expensive house there, so it would be a gentrification process versus maybe two or three townhouses on that property, so that's really the choice. I think it was Commissioner Miller who said the last time that she was, well, I was surprised that we weren't in the TOD, but I think you commented that you're used to seeing a Bella-type configuration, and that was not the case around this particular station, so it's consistent with that thought process. And the other thing I wanted to say is that I personally called the next-door neighbor at least three or four times, telling him that my intention to do this, and I never received any phone calls back on that, so I, I tried to be inclusive with respect to that, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to open up for any comments and opposed in opposition to this request, seeing none, bring it back to the table for discussion.
I realize this is non-contiguous, but with the close proximity to the planned station, I think that this deserves more scrutiny. I would be happy with moving this forward with a no recommendation.
I agree, I think this is why we do it case by case. Is that a motion?
I see some thoughtful looks, if there's some discussion, I'd be happy to hear it before I make a motion.
Sure, I was just going to say, I came up with this criteria, but I also thought we should take it parcel by parcel, just in case there were some other considerations. take it parcel by parcel, just in case there were some other considerations. I mean, in this case, I would not recommend vote in favor of approving it, but with no recommendation and further study and notification to neighbors, I would be comfortable with it.
I mean, we've got, we've got the complication of the NCOD, it's not adjacent, there's, there's other individual property owners between that parcel and the current boundary, and the opportunity to always exist for that applicant to come forward and rezone. So if we're being consistent, I feel like I will probably not accept that, but if it goes forward, I'm fine, because I think additional discussion around it and where it's located is important, so I'm stating my position on it.
I agree with both Commissioner Hay, Ryan, and Otwell. I, I want to be consistent, and it's not contiguous, but I think it's primed to be part of the TOD, because it's not outlined as such, I would have to vote against the request added as, as part of the TOD.
You can have split votes.
Could we, could we hear from staff on this particular one? And what the thinking was on this one?
Staff has any comments?
Yeah, so, you know, I did try, or, we outlined the way we should think about these things before we started, so as to not be biased and sort of rehash, sort of the scientific method approach. If Mr. Twig lived there, this would be accept. There's, really, he is, was given the staff recommendation because we did favor contiguity fairly early in the list of things for us to evaluate. I take his word that he did his level best to contact, he certainly, I think, I will not vouch for having tried to call this person, because I did not, so I'll have to believe him that he did that. But other than that, I mean, if we go back to the slide where I said, you know, how close is it? It's certainly very close. It would, you know, it is close enough that even though it is small, we'll, we'll advance the goals, but the contiguity was relatively high on my list. If that were not true, then, then this would be a, an accept from, from staff. But I don't know if, I'm sort of in a similar position with Mr. Raines, is I agree with everyone.
Yeah, and honestly, same. I see it very much the case, and if I were a judge, then I'd say the answer's no, but as a legislative person, I understand...
So one thing I will say, not to interrupt, so, which I just did, sorry. The, the final recommendation will be voted on on the 12th after, so the report of PC. I fully expect to write a relatively long certified recommendation for you all, because there's a lot of stuff going on. Inasmuch as I have written down today, you know, any expansion that was contiguous with a no recommendation, residential request to be removed, et cetera, I can attempt to write that for you. And as much as there's been agreement among the eight of you today, so for instance, here's the list of NA's, Planning Commission may or may not think they're good, but is waiting, would recommend that council do further engagement. Just to make it clear that, I think I've heard from multiple people on not just this case, but other ones, that you're not entirely opposed or in favor one way or the other, but we just like the process to be better. So I will attempt to capture all that. You will obviously be able to read it, because I will have prepared it before the 12th, if you would like to change it. But there were a number of, at least six or seven NA's, or no recommendations that I got today.
Can we finish the vote on this one? And then we can do a summary after?
I have a question for you. Why is the adjacent property not in the, I guess, why did you decide to stop it where you did?
So in, in long view in general, so all of the properties that are on New Bern Avenue itself are included, and then occasionally there is one or two further up the block, so it does sort of, it's not a straight line, right? Those streets are not perpendicular, they curve, so the zoning request kind of curves with them. And so I think the original approach of the consultant had to do with sort of where the lots lined up. This particular lot, two, two lots to the south of Mr. Twig is relatively large, so, you know, to be fair, I could have seen the TOD doing this instead. I do not have in my knowledge or in my notes, like, every particular nuance of why the consultant and the, the project manager for this part of the corridor, when they went over lot by lot, decided, like, where in particular one, some, some things I think are lost to But in generally, you know, we, we were including all the frontage lots, and then occasionally, based on the disposition of the land and the, further up the block. So if Mr. Twig would have been included, the most likely scenario would have been something like that or something. And we were just not encroaching that far into long view in general. But to his point, if he were, he is pretty close. From a normal person outside of list, bullet lists of, you know, rubrics and stuff, definitely walking distance to this white circle.
Sorry, do we have a vote on the table?
In your opinion, are, is there any advantage or disadvantage with its proximity to the school?
Not in particular. I mean, it's, you know, someone else mentioned that they moved near Enlow to go to Enlow, so the, the most I can say is if there's more units for people to do that, at least someone else has said that's desirable, I can't really speak to anything other than that.
So I'll note that we have voted as a commission before to create non-contiguous TOD rezonings at the request of applicants across the city. And with that, I'm going to move to recommend this with no recommendation going forward to the council.
Second.
We have a motion to recommend no recommendation. All, all in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, all opposed.
I'm opposing, I think, because, are we being consistent with what we've been doing? For, for this case, weren't we, didn't we have some sort of general rule we were using for the non-contiguous requests to be added? So we're treating this one differently?
Because it's so close to the proposed station.
So we did earlier, we did take that into consideration, the proximity was, it was the reverse of this, but the fact that it was right across the street from the station played into our decision on sort of how we moved it forward. So, and you know, I even just said earlier when I was speaking about wanting to make sure we were, we were consistent, but I think the criteria, and even hearing Mr. Mabel talk about how it was established, I think this is reasonable if we take that criteria to be considered, and we're not, we're not, we're not recommending that it be approved, we're recommending that it move out and there's further discussion and thought about it. So that's, that's where I came down on that, Commissioner Bennett.
But you were in support, right?
I'll change my vote then to support moving it forward with no recommendation. Can I do that?
Can we do a, a redo?
If someone had voted in favor...
Into the mic, please.
Makes a motion to reconsider. Since you're in the minority, don't vote.
I make a motion to reconsider the vote on M6.
We have a motion to reconsider the vote, all in favor? All opposed? Okay.
I'm just sticking with it. I just want to be the consistent on that.
So, the motion passes, so we get to vote again on the original motion.
Oh, I thought that's what I was...
Oh, oh, God. I'm in support of that.
So move again, move again. Let's do it, make another motion.
The original motion still stands, if I understand procedure, because we voted to reconsider the motion at hand, so now the motion and the second is on the table.
So all in favor of the original motion?
I don't know what I'm voting for.
So this is the original vote?
Okay, there we go. Okay.
Making sure.
So all in favor? Let me see all the hands, okay. One, two, three, four, okay. All opposed? Okay, passes six to one.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I think, well, I think we're running out of time, people are going to leave. I appreciate everyone's patience with this process and the ability for commissioners to stick around and staff as well, so thank you. With that, we'll, we have some deferrals for the next meeting and a lot to get through, so we'll see you on the 29th.
Thank you.